Good evening, everyone. We'll call this regular meeting to order at 5:04. Mr. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Duran.
Here.
Councilmember McReynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Manganay.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Here.
Councilmember Campos.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Halter.
Here.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez-Blasios.
Here.
Seven members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, thank you. Could everybody who's able to stand, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll begin with a couple of special presentations and announcements. First one being National Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. And I'm honored to recognize July as National Parks and Recreation Month, a time to celebrate the vital role parks and recreation play in building strong, vibrant, and healthy communities. Parks and recreation are essential public services, just like roads, schools, and public safety. They promote physical and mental health, provide safe spaces for play, and bring people together across generations and backgrounds. They also support economic growth, improve property values, and make our city a more desirable place to live and work. I want to thank our dedicated Parks and Recreation staff who work behind the scenes, early mornings, late nights, and on weekends, not just to answer my calls or my text messages, but to maintain our parks and deliver high-quality programs. I also want to recognize the community members, volunteers, and local organizations who contribute their time and energy to making our parks so special. So now, on behalf of the City Council, I am proud to proclaim July as National Parks and Recreation Month in Ventura. And I'd like to present a proclamation to our Director Stacy Zerazua and invite her to come up. I will. Do you want me to say it now? Yeah, that's fine. Perfect. I'm bringing everybody. Don't run away. Because it's a team effort. Absolutely.
Squish and clump. Even closer.
See over mayor. Stacy, hold it. Even closer?
Kirk, is ready? One, two, three.
Yay. Thanks for all the work you guys did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Ventura. I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of our entire Parks and Recreation team. This year's theme of Build Together, Play Together reflects our department's commitment to creating safe, inclusive spaces for all community members. Parks and Recreation builds community, promotes physical and mental health, and supports lifelong learning. I want to thank and recognize our incredible team of professionals. This was only a fraction of them here tonight. The rest are out in the field, plugging away. They show up with heart every day, maintaining our parks, coaching teams, leading camps, and creating experiences that connect people across generations. It's their behind-the-scenes work that makes our spaces welcoming and our programs meaningful. Parks and Recreation are more than amenities. They are essential to our city's quality of life. Thank you for your continued support and investment in these vital community spaces and services. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Stacy. Our next presentation is the 2024 Crime Statistics and Public Safety Trends. And I invite Police Chief Dickey to come up to the podium.
I'm in charge. I was hoping I could just say next slide and it would work.
We're trying a new thing here.
Madam Mayor, council, thanks for having me. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Just up front, before we get started, I spoke with the City Manager, I don't know, maybe eight weeks ago or so. We had this presentation prepared. I'm sorry, it's a little bit delayed. We typically try to get this out. This information was released back in March, but we're a little bit delayed. Obviously, we had a hiring process going on and there were some other things. So here I am. So we'll get started. Tonight, we're not just sharing data about the police department. We're actually giving the data context. We're sharing the story of how your police department serves the community, provides a really high level of incredible service in response to calls for help, and builds trust every day here in the city of Ventura.
Told you it was new.
There we go. So I'm hesitant to put a lot of words and numbers on slides, but to give you context, I'm going to be very transparent with you. There are some great things that are going on at the police department and some areas that we obviously are transparent about in regards to areas that we know we have room for improvement. So this chart here shows the crime rates per 1,000. So this is the NiBRS. That's been used a lot. I'm sure you've heard that, but that's the National Incident-Based Reporting System. We transitioned to this system a few years ago. We were on UCR before. This is just a more accurate picture of the total crimes in our community. This is the comparison across the county. Obviously, this is one that we don't want to be in first place on, but we are. That's kind of typical for a county seat to have that. As the county seat, Ventura's crime rate is impacted by the numerous services that we provide here in the city. That would include the jail, the hospital district, trauma hospital, social services, et cetera. We have a much larger transient and vagrant and homeless population here compared to other cities in the county, and that reflects in a lot of the crime stats. So right now, we sit at 71 crimes per 1,000. Something of interest here is that the crime rates are trending downward. They have been for the last few years. This is actually still a historically low number for us overall. So that's something to, or that's some context to add. But in addition to that, this crime picture actually takes into account something different from the old system. The new system actually takes into account proactive policing measures to address community problems. So arrests that our officers make to address community issues actually are now reflective in these crime rates. So for context, if we remove the proactive policing from this, it would go from 70, almost 71, down to 51 per 1,000. It's a substantial difference. We actually have the highest enforcement policing rate in the county compared to all the other agencies. So it's reflective that our officers are doing what we ask them to do, which is go out and address community issues. But again, that drives up those crime rates as well. So where we stand out, as I've talked about, there's three different areas in NiBRS. It's the person crimes per 1,000, the property crimes per 1,000, and then crimes against society. Crimes against society, the last one that I talked about, incorporates the proactive policing. So that would be things like drug arrests, weapons arrests, things of those nature. So it does drive up our overall rate. However, historically, our violent crime or person crime rate has been low and it continues to be low compared to years past. So again, adding context to the data, so this chart here actually gives you a quick snapshot of our overall total calls for service and responses. So in the middle, you'll see the call type or the calls for service. We're down slightly this year over last. 911 calls are different from calls. 911 calls are actually phone calls that come in directly to our communication center. Then you have the calls for service comparison from 23 to 24 in the middle. And then total calls, that's the total number of officer responses that went to those 83,677 calls. And again, we are trending down slightly. So obviously, we, year over year, we address proactive policing measures that have impacted crime positively in our community. In addition to that, our residents that we do a lot of outreach with are much better informed than in years past. And actually, crime prevention techniques do work over time. We've seen that. In addition to that, community perceptions about crime, to be very honest with you, sometimes people don't call us as often as they used to regarding low-level crimes. And that's something that we're addressing through a lot of community outreach as well. And again, as I mentioned previously, our crime trends have been trending down for the last six years or so, and they're again at historically low rates again this year. So these three goals are key metrics that are outlined in our expired strategic plan. Industry-wide standard for response to emergency calls is five minutes, and we're well under that goal. Industry-wide standard for priority-two calls, which is there is a danger that's present to either property or people, is 10 minutes, and we're also well under that goal. Where we struggle is with the calls that there is no immediate danger to life or property. We have a stated 20-minute goal. We're substantially over that. However, we did see a year-over-year 2% decrease in that area. We've adjusted some of our internal strategies with professional staff employees, our criminal investigative technicians, which were approved here recently in recent budget cycles, have helped us address some of these issues, and we'll continue to make adjustments moving forward. So this is a very interesting chart, one that we're actually very proud of. So if you start at the base of the pyramid, again, that's our total calls for service, about just shy of 84,000. If you were to extrapolate that out to how many people that we actually interacted with over the course of a year, our best guess estimate is probably well in excess of 250,000 to 300,000 interactions with people based on just those calls for service. Arrest, out of all of those contacts, we end up making about 5,400 arrests total. Again, just for calls for service, that's right at the 6% mark. And the interesting thing when we share this data is that there's a perception that there's a high level of force that's being used on a regular basis. Clearly, 113 out of 84,000 is a very, very, very low volume. And then the GBI, that's a term from our police industry, which is great bodily injury. That means that serious force was used. This last year in 2024, we had zero incidents. So if I could break this down just a little bit further, over 80% of our uses of force, so 80% of the 113, were the lowest form possible, which is a simple takedown. Imagine being a young cop, 2:00 in the morning, you stop someone who's prowling. What's the first thing they do? They run. Well, somebody's got to catch him and take him down. So that's a typical low-level use of force, where they catch up, they take the person to the ground, and they arrest them. Very low level. So we're extremely proud of this. It's a 22% decrease from the previous year, and we attribute that to extensive de-escalation training that is ongoing and built into every facet of our training at the police department, but also the extreme professionalism that our officers and our professional staff, quite frankly, display on a daily basis. Another interesting piece of data, I'm sorry, data that has context. So clearly, the number-one community complaint that we receive at the police department is related to homelessness and vagrancy-related crimes. Year over year, we saw an 8% decrease. That captures calls for service from the community, but also our officers' self-initiated or proactive policing measures in the city. So that's a good sign, and we attribute this to having a fully-staffed patrol task force that covers seven days a week and are doing outreach on a daily basis, and also policing measures such as enforcement. And in addition to that, we have a great partnership with our city staff and team and other service providers that are helping us address some of the ongoing vagrancy issues and homelessness within our city. So this is another interesting piece of data that comes from the police department, and we'll add some context to it. So if you total all of our total police responses, we're up at about 122,000. We detained, that means we contacted and talked to someone, and they weren't free to leave about 15,000 times. That resulted in just shy of 5,400 arrests. Again, we're back, we talked about the 113 uses of forces. We fielded 62 complaints this last year. So we are a very transparent department. You can call, come by, stop, any, we will take a complaint from anybody, anytime. We actually have a link on our website as well, where it's very easy to anonymously, if you'd like to do that as well. 62 is actually a really high year for us. We typically average about 30. Every one of those was thoroughly investigated by a professional standards unit, and we came away with six total sustained complaints out of 122,000 total police responses. Of those six, not that I studied this and know it well, but five of those were for discourtesy. Legitimately, some of our cops sometimes are discourteous at times. That was dealt with. And one of those was for improper tactics. Very low level from the policing side or the policing industry side of things. Those are very low numbers, and those are very low-level complaint resolution numbers as well. So we're very proud of this. It speaks to the professionalism of our entire staff, from our dispatch center through our professional standard, or our professional ranks, all the way out to our officers. One of the things we're extremely proud of is the trust and relationships that we've developed over the last several years at the police department. It actually goes back several decades. We average three a week with the community. We do not have dedicated staff for that. That is absolutely people that are taking time out other days off or during their normal busy hours of work to go out. So 64 community council meetings we attended, 15 curbside coffee chats at the local schools. We did an additional 55 school visits, numerous K-9 demos, safety talks, and a lot of scam prevention work as well. Some key takeaways. In case you can't tell, I'm pretty proud of the police department that I inherited about five weeks ago. I think we provide a high level of professional service. We do have the highest crime rate overall in the county. We do have some strategies in place that are attempting to address those, to bring those down. In addition to that, we look forward to building out a strategic plan here in the coming year that will also address those more specifically with some measurable strategies. Force is rarely used at this police department. We're very well-connected to our community, to the point where they're very comfortable coming to us and talking with us when there are issues. And I really, one of our goals moving forward is to make sure that we remain a values-based police department. We respect professionalism and transparency, our things that we do in the community with our, with our community members, but also internally at the police department itself. With that, I am concluded. Are there any questions or comments that I could address?
Thank you, Chief. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for the Chief? Seeing none and hearing none, I think you're good to go. Thank you. So moving on on our agenda, I'll go ahead and go to our city attorney for any closed-session report.
Mayor, the council took both items on the closed-session agenda up in closed session, and there was no report of action.
Thank you. Moving on to City Council communications. Anyone have any communications to report? Councilmember Campos, followed by Councilmember Schumacher.
I wanted to acknowledge, especially since it was a day that we honored Parks and Rec, that our parks and all of our city is on unceded shoemash land. And I wanted to thank everyone who attended the library event last week after hearing about it at City Council. It shows that even when the room isn't full, there's a lot of people watching, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher, followed by Deputy Mayor Halter.
Thank you, Mayor. So just FYI, everybody, there will be two more summer stomp sessions, which is the Community Line Dancing Event at California Street and Main Street. This is a collaborative effort with the Chamber of Commerce, the city of Ventura, KHAY, and Ventucky Stompers, and also the Downtown Ventura Partners. It happens on Wednesday, so you've got two more opportunities to go out there and line dance with everybody. It starts at 6:00 PM. Big, huge thank you to our Economic Development Manager Meredith Hart and also the Chamber President and CEO Stephanie Caldwell for bringing this wonderful community event to liven up downtown. Just FYI, also, we know that 4th of July brings a lot of family and excitement. And just kind of reiterating, and I think the Chief would appreciate this. The Ventura Police Department urges the public to skip the illegal fireworks this year, if you can. The department responded to over 300 fireworks-related 911 calls and issued 9,000 citations last year. So residents are strongly encouraged to keep those, to keep your neighborhood safe by reporting illegal firework activity. If you witness any fireworks in progress that pose an immediate threat to our property or life, please call 911. And also, connected to that, the Animal Services in Ventura County is offering free dog adoptions. Usually during this time, the fireworks really aggravate a lot of the dogs, and they end up escaping their homes. They jump fences, and this can lead to an influx of arrivals to the local shelters. And the Ventura County Animal Services is offering free dog adoptions because, as you may have read already on the newspaper, the two shelters is climbing beyond capacity of more than 200 dogs. So the free adoption starts June 27th and will end on July 13th. So if you want to add to your family with a new addition, go see the list of dogs available for adoption at animalservices.venturacounty.gov/dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just wanted to reiterate too, I'm looking forward to seeing the Ventucky Stompers tomorrow night, 6:00 PM downtown. And I'm very proud of the Chamber of Commerce and the city and the downtown working together during this community-building activity. They've been averaging 300 to 400 people at each one of these. And I've seen it all on social media, and it looks like a blast, so I'm planning on being down there tomorrow night, 6:00 PM. And then, of course, on 4th of July, on Friday, is the Pusham Poem Parade, which the city's been doing for many, many years, and then followed by the street fair. So it's going to be a lot of people downtown. Looking forward to seeing that as well. And so I will again be down in that area on the 4th of July. And then my own Downtown Ventura Rotary Group sponsors the 4th of July fireworks. That was started, the college, at 9:00 PM later that night. So and that, it looks like the Saturday Farmer's Market would still be going on as well. So the following, on that previous, the next day. That's about it. It's going to be an active weekend, and it's fun being in the beginning of summer and looking forward to a really great, fun summer with community members, family, and visitors alike. So look forward to seeing everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate that. I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Dickey and the entire Ventura Police Department for all the work that you do. I'm in a meeting that I go to every month at the police station, and we meet with social service workers, the police task force, there's that hospital there, county hospital. Everybody you can think of to do one thing, and that's to help those that are continually being arrested, those that are homeless, those that need the help that they need. And every month, we get together, and that's one of the reasons the numbers are as great as they are, because, and you know, I've been doing this for several years, and the police officers are like first-class. They care. They want to come up with solutions. We collaborate together. And I just, I'm so impressed with the entire police force. So I just want to say thank you to you, and I also want to say, as we celebrate our nation's independence, take a moment, let's take a moment to reflect on the freedom that we enjoy in our community that makes Ventura such an incredible place to live. So I wish everybody safe and joyful, Independence Day filled with gratitude, unity, and celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds.
Just really quick, I want to build on Councilmember Duran's comments, you know, and wish everybody a safe and sane 4th of July. And then, this really, as we transition onto July 5th, we're 365 days from celebrating our 250th anniversary as a nation, and we'll be doing that. Some special events are planned, and so looking forward to the, our next 4th of July already. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. And building on that as well, I just wanted to also remind folks in terms of the illegal fireworks, just fireworks in general, cause a lot of PTSD for our veterans. And that's another population that I tend to have a close heart for. And so just in addition to our love for pets, our love for our veterans as well. And I wanted to, as the representative for Gold Coast Transit, wanted just to share a few changes that are happening for bus services. And we can go on to the next slide. Just wanted to let you know, so these adjustments represent a reallocation of existing Just wanted to let you know, so these adjustments represent a reallocation of existing services, and they are meant to hopefully close some of the gaps that currently exist in some of the bus services. Next slide, please. And so, starting July today, you see, you'll see these schedule modifications. Route 11, which services Pacific View Mall and Telephone and Will Center, there, the trips will now be thirty minutes throughout the day. Route 15, which services the Esplanade, El Rio, and St. John's, will have an hourly frequent, frequency throughout the day. Next slide, please. And then these are minor schedule adjustments that will happen again throughout the, the weekdays and weekends. Not, again, to simply close the, and tighten the times between certain time points on various trips throughout the days that account for traffic, high passenger boardings, any reduction in excessive dwell times. Next slide, please. And bus stop changes. So if you are someone who frequently takes the bus, know that there are some relocations happening and removals as well. So for example, Victoria and Ralston Stop, which is southbound, will be moved closer to the intersection, which will affect Route 6 and 21. And then the removals will be for Telegraph and Baylor, Route 6, 10, and 21. Telegraph and West Campus, Route 6, 10, and 21 as well. And then Highway 33 and Oakdale, Route 16 in both directions. And again, these are removals because either lack of ridership, and the one specific to Highway 33 is because there's not enough pedestrian, safe pedestrian area for them to wait for the bus, and so that's being removed. Next slide, please. And so these are just the bus relocations for your view. Next slide. Again, these are the discontinued one, and one more, I think. And these are the time point relocations. Next slide. And if you want more information, you can call their customer service number at 805-487-4222, or email customerservice@gct.org. So just wanted to make sure that information was out there for our residents. Thank you.
Okay, and with that, I turn it over to city manager for any communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Not to be repetitive on the fireworks issues, I have a little bit of information on my slide, but I will send out a final reminder for applications for our Ventura Police Department's free ten-week community academy, closed this Friday, July 4th. This program is open to Ventura residents and officers, an inside look at local policing through hands-on training, engaging discussions with department personnel, and even a ride-along. Spots are limited and classes begin in August. It's a great opportunity to learn about your community and how the police department serves it. I'm pleased to visit our website to learn more and apply. And before our summer break, we have two additional meetings. They will be on Tuesday, July 8th, followed by Wednesday, July 9th, for a special meeting. And, and lastly, Mayor, I'd like to recognize somebody who, who has been a familiar face in the chambers here for a number of years. We, we are fortunate to have members of our police department on hand to act as sergeant of arms in the event that something gets out of hand and we need some action taken swiftly, but more importantly, to really keep things from happening to begin with. And it takes a special touch, and we're, we're very fortunate to have had Officer Jamie McClellan here in the chambers since I've been with the city and, and for a period of time before that, nearly twenty years with the Ventura Police Department, and thirty years in law enforcement service in Ventura County. He is retiring, and so this is his last evening. And so I wanted to, to recognize him, thank Jamie for his years of service, and wish you all the best in retirement.
Thank you for that, and congratulations on your retirement. Well deserved, I'm sure. Moving on now to our public communications, this portion of the public communications is where members of the public can address the city council on any city business that is not listed on tonight's agenda. The city council cannot discuss, deliberate, or vote on items raised during this public communications portion. And as a reminder, and to help us maintain decorum during the meeting, so that everyone feels comfortable participating and providing public comments, I ask that you please show your support in an inclusive and respectful way by using the American Sign Language, sign for applause by raising your hands and gently waving them back and forth. The initial public communications period is limited to twenty speakers with priorities given to in-person speakers. If you would like to speak during public comment, please be sure to give your speaker card now, and all cards must be turned in at this time to ensure an accurate count of speakers. Now, Mr. City Clerk, have we received any speaker cards?
Thank you, Mayor. We have received seven speaker cards for general public comment. Just a reminder for our virtual participants, you can use the raise hand feature if you'd like to speak on non-agenda related matters. And Mayor, we're at seven speakers.
Right, and since we are ten or fewer speakers, each speaker will get three minutes. And at this time, I'll go ahead and open public comment, and you may call the first speaker.
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening will be Brian Brennan, followed by John Sanders Jones, Dale Marinas, Glenn Overly, Casey Rodriguez, Wayne Morgan, and Hales King.
Thank you, Michael. And Madam Mayor, deputy mayor, members of the council and staff, I'm before you today in my role as the pro bono special projects manager for Beacon, the joint powers agency of which the City of Ventura has been a member since the JPA's inception in nineteen eighty-eight. Wanted to give you a brief update this evening on what Beacon is anticipating doing over the next few months, and will be back at a later date with the executive director, Mark Baylor, to give you a more in-depth presentation of some of the projects and policies that affect the Ventura City coastline. As you all know, the finishing touches are presently being placed on Phase Two of the shoreline restoration of Surfers Point, and Beacon would like to submit the project with the city's blessing for consideration as America's best restored beach. This annual competition is hosted by the American Shore and Beach Preservation Association, which Beacon is a member of, and attracts notoriety both nationally and internationally for all the submissions and, of course, the winners. I just wanted to let the city manager and the public works director know this is in the works, and I will be contacting the public works department for a contact to garner information, more information should we need it. Thank you. Also, I want to let you all know that Beacon would like to collaborate ongoing with camera and recording monitoring of Surfers Point beyond coastal snap. And coastal snap is an opportunity for citizens to get involved in science. There's a little post set up, they can put their camera phone in there, they take a picture from that post, and then that gets posted to a website, and over time, you can see the change in the shoreline as it comes and goes. This is really a great way for, to educate our residents, and certainly our beachgoers and, and visitors, on how the shoreline's changing every day with, before our eyes sometimes. So I also wanted to acknowledge that we'll be applying for a grant for that, and we'll want to work with the same public works contact to make sure we have all the right information. But before the project, as the project was getting started, Beacon installed a camera for recording construction of Phase Two in partnership with Cal State Channel Islands. Professor Kiki Patch, who is really the, the doctor, the sand doctor, as we call her, and would like to offer that also for ongoing monitoring as part of a new program approach to programmable monitoring request, which is requested by the Coastal Commission. Happy to discuss this with the public works contact and keep the city's public information team updated, so they too can take advantage of this opportunity. And thank you again for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Thanks.
John Sanders Jones, followed by Dale Marinas.
Good afternoon, everybody. Some further reflections on immigration. As I've noted before, our nation has long grappled with the challenges surrounding immigration, especially along our southern border, for more than half a century. The enduring struggle led me to wonder, have we been approaching this issue from the wrong angle all along? Curious, I asked an unconventional question to a chatbot. I said, what's the opposite of the advice you would typically give for properly addressing immigration issues in the United States? Here was the response. I would normally recommend tackling immigration with nuanced, evidence-based analysis that considers diverse viewpoints and avoids oversimplification. So the opposite approach would involve making sweeping generalizations without regard for individual circumstances or data, advocating extreme, one-size-fits-all solutions like fully open or completely closed borders, ignoring the complex economic impacts across different regions and industries, dismissing humanitarian concerns or failing to account for real-life implementation difficulties, refusing compromise or an honest acknowledgement of necessary trade-offs, letting emotions override practical outcomes, and overlooking the voices of those most directly affected, from immigrant families to local communities and workers. Ultimately, immigration policy is a multi-dimensional puzzle intertwining economics, humanitarianism, national security, and administration flexibility. Solving it requires balancing these priorities, not clinging to a pure ideology at the expense of practical solutions. That was the chatbot response. My closing thought, as I've been given this a great deal of thought lately, immigration, not just in the US but across the globe, what stands out the most is how rarely we truly listen to one another. This disconnect, I believe, is what makes the issue feel so stubbornly unsolvable. Immigration is not a binary debate. It's a mosaic of human stories. Try to apply Ockham's razor and it falls short, simply, because simply answers don't hold up. Even the most nuanced policies struggle, not for lack of solutions, but because we fail to hear one another. And with failing to hear one another, I think those we need most urgently to listen to are those we disagree with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale Marinas, followed by Glenn Overly.
Well, after the vote you had on Thursday night, I'm addressing councilmember for the Ventura City of Councilman Duran, and the rest of you for Sodom and Gomorrah. I have a few things to say about Thursday night. You got slapped down on Friday by SCOTUS with regards to immigration, as well as regards to activist judges who are making these, these pauses in immigration law and everything else, just because. Mr. McReynolds? I'd have been crying too if I compromised my integrity by saying I agreed with another council member, then stabbing him in the back and voting against him, and saying you agreed with him. I'd have been crying too. The mayor and the deputy mayor on the 11th of June went down to LA and were, were recorded on Channel 11 News. Now, I don't recall, if you went there as individuals, that's one thing, but you spoke out and said that you were representing Ventura, and I don't recall authorizing you to say fight, fight the Immigration ICE Border Patrol. As a matter of fact, employing illegals is a felony or a misdemeanor, depending upon how many you employ. Mr. Halter, don't you have a large landscaping firm that has a lot of people in it? How many unindicted felonies could you be facing? And as far as what Mr. Ryan over there said concerning Iran, Trump did not declare war on Iran. Your civics, which you seem to be so up on, only Congress can declare war. But I got news for you. War was declared a long time ago. On November 4th, nineteen seventy-nine, the Ayatollah declared war on the US when he attacked the Shah of Iran and then took the US Embassy. I know. I was in theater at the time in route to Tehran. I was put on standby for three days to see if we could rescue the hostages. So war wasn't declared by Trump, it was declared by the Ayatollah. Also, I'm sure you're all aware that the DOJ yesterday filed suit against Los Angeles in the Central District Court in California. That encompasses, encompasses seven counties, and they filed them for interference in immigration. Now, your policy also is a violation, that it's interfering with immigration, and it just so happens that the Central District Court encompasses seven counties, one of them is Ventura. How soon is your policy going to embroil this city in a lawsuit from the DOJ? We'll find out, because once you get that printed, what you actually voted on, it will be going to Health and Human Services, Homeland Security, and the DOJ. We'll see what happens to your funding, your federal funding at that point.
Glenn Overly, followed by Casey Rodriguez and Wayne Morgan.
I think tonight you're going to find my comments kind of nice after that. Good evening. Congratulations on the passage of the CARE Act policy. Special shout-out to councilmembers Campos, Schumacher, and the city attorney's office for their work on the CARE policy. My concerns tonight are related to what happened before the CARE policy came up for discussion. The protocols clearly establish time limits for non-agenda public comments. When there are ten or fewer speakers, the speaking time is three minutes per speaker. Over ten speakers requires an automatic reduction in time as spelled out by the protocols. The protocol rules are there for a reason. The night of the CARE Act policy, the mayor arbitrarily reduced the time for a single non-agenda public speaker to one minute. That action, taken exclusively by the mayor to reduce public speaking time, saved exactly two minutes. Was that really necessary to create a more efficient streamlined meeting? And then at the end of the meeting, the mayor allowed three minutes for public speakers? It makes no sense and further frustrates public speakers and undermines public trust. Please be consistent. I would like to see this council body create a policy that requires the mayor to suspend protocols every time she decides to arbitrarily reduce public speaking times, and require a two-third council vote to actually carry out this campaign to reduce public input. Requiring a two-third vote would actually, you'll love this, align with district-based policy to give council members an opportunity to follow their constituents' wishes. I know the mayor and council have said on numerous occasions that they want to rebuild trust in the public. News alert, cutting public, public speaking time is not rebuilding the trust, it's actually eroding it. Goodarc worked diligently with the citizens to revamp the protocols and came up with a compromise that made sense. Not everyone got exactly what they wanted, but this olive branch created by Goodarc was, was working toward the restoration of citizen trust. That is how speaking time protocols were modified and adopted by council in 2024. Since 2016, when I began to observe council meetings, I have not seen any one member of council reduce public speaking times as much or as often as our current mayor. In fact, councilmember Johnson was one member that consistently would stand up for the rights of citizens. Please follow the protocols established by Goodarc, or at least request a two-third vote of council to suspend them. Couple side comments. I know this is Park and Rec time. Our golf courses look excellent, and they play really well. I play at least three times a week. I also want to give a shout-out to the two new stores that we have. Tractor Supply, which I never thought I'd find myself in, awesome store, and the new Ace Hardware on Thompson. Thank you.
Wayne Morgan, followed by our final speaker, Hales King.
I think Casey was next.
Apologies. Casey Rodriguez, followed by Wayne Morgan. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Rousers. First of all, I will like to say, according to Schumash beliefs and other indigenous communities, that tears are actually sacred, tears are medicine, and nobody should ever make someone feel bad for crying. So, Mr. McReynolds, please receive the hug I'm sending you and ignore all that hatred that is still sadly relevant in our city. Happy French-American Heritage and Disability Pride Month. Special thank you to councilwoman Liz Campos for showing Ventura and worldwide that people with disabilities can be great and well-respected leaders. Thank you, council, for honoring national parks tonight. However, to truly honor these sacred lands, we must honor all they are, not just what they've become since nineteen eighty, but what they've been since time immemorial, unceded Schumash land. The first national park established in our beautiful county is the Channel Islands National Park, Lumu, or currently known Park Lumu, or currently known as Santa Cruz Island. It's the original birthplace of the Schumash people. When we visit these lands, I humbly ask all to give them the same respect and reverence one would expect from me inside your home. To all who love these sacred spaces, it is critical that we continue asserting that national parks are for the people and shall remain for the people. Thank you to James Hines, a local resident who consistently educates and motivates his social media followers to take action. Just today, U.S. Senate passed a horrific environmental bill which will wreck havoc. This bill now returns to the U.S. House. We, the people, must take bold stance to make sure we stop this bill. Please follow James Hines on Facebook. And please come on July 7th, next Monday, even though agenda is not official until tomorrow. World's committees should be discussing, agendaizing, an official land acknowledgement, and a heritage calendar onto a near-future city council meeting. Thank you so much.
Wayne Morgan, followed by our final speaker, Hales King.
Hello, I'm Wayne Morgan. You haven't seen me for a while talking about climate, so I thought I'd give you an update. Recently, Johan Rockström, who is a joint director of the Potsdam Institute for Climate Impact Research, gave a talk during which he stated, "We are facing undoubtedly, in all forms of risk assessment, a very decisive moment for humanity's future on the planet Earth." I'm talking about the fact that we, for the first time in human history on planet Earth, are forced to seriously consider the risks of destabilizing the stability of the entire planet. What it means is that we are very close to approaching tipping points where we cause irreversibly, we irreversibly drift away from the life support systems that has enabled the world to develop over the past 250,000 years, and especially the last 12,000 years when humans started civilization with agriculture, et cetera. So, we need to take action now to avert very bad outcomes in the future. Therefore, I want to keep us, make sure we keep climate top of mind. In some good news, the California Ocean Protection Council is awarding a grant of up to $675,400 to the city of Ventura for the City of Ventura Sea Level Rise Community Co-Designed Adaptation Planning. So, this funding is to be used to evaluate the vulnerability of the coastline to help create an adaptation plan, and I am pleased to see that Ventura is applying for grant money to help with our adaptation of the changing environment due to climate change. Thank you to the staff for that.
And our final speaker is Hales King. Hales, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. Go for it.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Hales King. My pronouns are "they," "he." Firstly, I would like to thank the City Council for passing the CAREs policy this past Thursday, and thank you for having clear signage about the policies that will be moving forward in the chambers with limitations of speaking for the item and for signs without sticks. I also want to thank you for interrogating our police chief to help us better understand as a public what the communications with ICE and the lack of oversight our city actually has in regards to these captures and potential deportations of our residents looks like. I would like to urge the City Council, now that we have a non-enforcement on our side, to create something like a CAREs committee or a civil rights committee, much like Iowa City's Human Rights Committee, to develop city rights ordinance or referendum to amend our city charter. This committee could help tackle some of the additional concerns of the community brought forward by the people in regards to education on your rights, community engagement and education on minority communities such as LGBTQ facts, and connections to legal resources, housing, and potential therapy, and mental health for drug rehabilitation services. Creating and codifying a civil rights ordinance in our city would also create lasting, more real protections and not just non-enforcement policies in our city. The members of the community would also have a chance to help develop the language and vote for real protections if we put this to an app or permanent committee. This would be a longer project, a larger project than the CARE policy, and would bridge gaps in resources for our community. I emailed you all and included a link to the Iowa City's Human Rights Committee as a base model for what our CARE committee might look like, and our CARE committee might be able to tackle different priorities, including establishing a mutual aid fund for persons seeking reproductive care, affirming care, or legal assistance and guidance for immigration and naturalization processes. Thank you for your time, support of the community, and consideration of all this.
That concludes general public comment.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments or follow-up on related items?
I do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on on our agenda, we'll now go to consent items, and there are five consent items on tonight's agenda for consideration. Does anyone have any questions, comments, no votes, or requests to pull an individual item? Deputy Mayor Halter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a comment on item number three.
Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else. Go ahead with your comment on three.
I just want to mention that with the fire hazard severity zones at the map that we have, a significant part of the district that I was elected in is very high fire, so we received quite a few phone calls and concerns, emails regarding that. And I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we, as a city, are not allowed to downzone anything, and this is about hazard, not risk. So, it's really about the likelihood that something could happen in these neighborhoods. But I do want to make sure that those comments that people have sent in and that they've talked about here at council, that those do get forwarded on to somebody at the state. I'm not quite sure how important that is, because it really is about hazard and not risk, but maybe if I could ask for city attorney or city manager to weigh in on that. And finally, to reiterate that is that hazard is really how likely, risk is how bad, and hopefully, we could all work together to help reduce the potential for the severity of damage and loss when and if the next wildfire happens. So, we could all, the goal more than anything is our insurance rates are skyrocketing. We don't want to put our neighborhoods at risk at what we saw eight years ago, but I think a lot of us are getting priced out of living in our homes because of the high rates of insurance rates. So, everything we could do to help lower the cost of those rates and protect lives and property, we all need to work together to do so in the coming months and the coming years.
Thank you. Did you want to respond?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add that we have forwarded comments from the public to the Cal Fire leadership. We sent our last comments on June 25th.
Great, thank you. And with that, Mr. City Clerk, do we have any public comments for any of the items?
Thank you, Mayor. We've not received public comments for consent items.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and, is there a motion to accept?
Soon moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second for consent items.
You can go ahead and enter your vote now. All votes have now been entered. Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our public hearing items, item number six is the Saticoy Village Mixed Use Development, which is an item continued from March 18th, City Council meeting, and this is a quasi-judicial hearing, so I will turn it over to our city clerk for the process.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get started on the item, did want to highlight again, as you noted, that this item is a quasi-judicial hearing. We're just going to go through the process here real quick so everyone understands how the item will go. So, what will happen first is a disclosure of ex parte communications by council. That's the who and the what if council has spoke to anyone in regards to the project. After the ex parte disclosure, the mayor will open the public hearing, where it will be followed by a staff presentation, and then we do have the project applicant, and the project applicant will be given 10 minutes to present on the project, as well as will then move into council questions of staff and any questions of the project applicant. Once the presentations are done, we'll turn to public comment. After public comment, the applicant will have a five-minute concluding comments. Must be the same speaker as the original presentation for the item. And then, we have final council questions. Once questions are concluded, Mayor, you'll close the public hearing, and then we will then go to council deliberation and action, and I turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. So, at this point again, I will announce the item, the Saticoy Village Mixed Use Development, and I want to make sure that we have met all the noticing requirements.
Thank you, Mayor, and yes, this item has been adequately noticed.
And offer our colleagues for any ex parte disclosures that they may have.
And Mayor, before we do the ex parte, apologies, just wanted to note, this item was continued from the March 18th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Yes. So, I have Deputy Mayor Halter?
I just wanted to communicate that I have spoke to Mr. Chuck Cohen about this project.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes. Sometime in the past month, the developer and his attorney, Mr. Cohen, came to my office hours and spent some time with me there.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On June 23rd, I also had a presentation was given to me by the applicant's team.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds?
Same disclosure. I met with the applicant and one of their attorneys.
Thank you. Councilmember Jim Duran?
Same disclosure, same group. Thank you.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes, same as my colleagues, as well as my planning commissioner, Mark Gabby.
Thank you. And same disclosure for myself. I had interaction and communication with the applicant. So, with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to staff for their presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Deputy Mayor. Name's Jared Rosengrin. I'm a principal planner in the Community Development Department. The purpose of this agenda item is to request that City Council's consideration of a proposed mixed-use development on the final remaining undeveloped property within the Saticoy Village specific plan area. This proposed project includes the construction of a 49-unit apartment building, a gas station and convenience market with an attached drive-through car wash, two separate fast-food drive-through restaurants. The site is located on the east side of Wells Road between Old Town Saticoy and Highway 126 Freeway. The recommendation in staff report supports the strategic priority of economic vitality and development. Since the adoption of the Saticoy Village specific plan in 1996, four developments have been approved and built within the plan area, and these include the Chapel Lane Development, which incorporated single-family homes, multifamily housing, and senior housing, and then, as well as other primarily multifamily residential projects. While many of these developments required amendments or variances to the specific plan, they were all designed in keeping with the plan's urban pedestrian-friendly vision. Common characteristics included minimal setbacks, buildings oriented towards the street, on-street parking, and onsite parking screen behind structures. This proposal involves several case-type requests, including an amendment to the Saticoy Village specific plan, a planned development permit, major design review, use permits for the two drive-throughs associated with the fast-food restaurants and the gas station car wash, an alcohol use permit for the alcohol sales within the market, and a lot line adjustment to reconfigure the underlying legal lots. The project is divided into three distinct development areas, with the perimeter of the site proposed to be landscaped and on-street parking proposed along two of the four surrounding public rights way. The, that's good, thank you. The residential component is located at the northeast corner of the site at the intersection of Darling Road and Los Angeles Avenue. It consists of a new three-story podium-style courtyard apartment building, providing 49 The gas station market component is located at the northwest corner of the property at Darling Road and Wells Road. The market is proposed to be 6,845 square feet with a 3,000-square-foot drive-through car wash wrapping around the building. And then, the third area is the drive-through restaurants, which are positioned at the southwest corner of the site at the intersection of Wells Road and Snapdragon Street. Two adjacent drive-through buildings are proposed here, one with space for an additional retail tenant, and then the other is a standalone drive-through use. This proposal was presented to Planning Commission during a public hearing on January 23rd. After careful consideration, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended the City Council deny the project. Their primary concern was the auto-centric design of the proposal, particularly the placement of the gas station as the focal point at a prominent intersection. This design approach was seen as inconsistent with the guiding principles of the Saticoy Village specific plan, which emphasizes pedestrian-oriented development and a traditional urban design character. That said, the Planning Commission did express support for the integration of housing and restaurant uses, which better align with the specific plan's intent to promote mixed-use walkable communities. Like the Planning Commission, staff has significant concerns about the project's strong auto-oriented focus. Despite extensive efforts, we have been unable to persuade the applicant to revise the proposal to reduce the number of drive-throughs or reconfigure the site plan to better reflect a traditional neighborhood-friendly design. Given this impasse, staff believes that bringing the project forward to Planning Commission and City Council with a recommendation for denial prior to design and environmental review serves two important purposes. First, it reaffirms that staff is consistently applying existing policy and regulatory documents in line with City Council direction, and second, it provides the applicant with clear, easy guidance on the project's misalignment with city planning principles, potentially saving them a significant financial investment in detailed design and environmental studies. Staff finds that the current proposed design is inconsistent with the policies and standards necessary to support approval. The 2005 General Plan guides land use decisions in this area, and a core principle of the plan's land use element is to make places great by insisting on the highest standards of quality in architecture, landscaping, and urban design. The General Plan emphasizes reducing automobile independence or dependence and improving the appearance of key corridors and gateways. The current proposal with its auto-centric layout and building placement is clearly at odds with these objectives. In 2009, City Council adopted the Saticoy Wells Community Plan, which implements the General Plan at the neighborhood level, and this plan promotes walkable, compact neighborhoods and specifically calls out for greater intensity and mix of uses along Los Angeles Avenue and Wells Road, the goals which are not reflected in the proposed project. Further, the Saticoy Village specific plan adopted in 1996 seeks to encourage development in a traditional town pattern emphasizing high-quality public spaces that are pedestrian-oriented. The plan represents the city's first fame-form-based code, which is created to the needs of modern users while preserving the walkable, community-centered character of historic California towns. The city's longstanding vision for this site is for it to become a neighborhood focal point, a gateway to Old Saticoy and a community gathering space. Since 1996, both the specific plan and the community plan have established a clear hierarchy, pedestrian and neighborhood-serving uses taking priority while auto-oriented uses are secondary. In contrast, the applicant's proposal appears to be tailored to capture commuter vehicle traffic that is passing through Saticoy rather than serving the surrounding residential community. In conclusion, we ask City Council to support staff's recommendation for denial and to reinforce the city's commitment to creating high-quality pedestrian-oriented neighborhoods that reflect the goals of the General Plan, Community Plan, and Specific Plan by adopting a resolution to deny the Saticoy Village Mixed Use Development and its request of a specific plan amendment, planned development permit, major design review, four use permits, and a lot line adjustment, and to find that the resolution is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The following alternatives are available. If City Council supports the proposed project as submitted, then council could direct staff to proceed with environmental review for the proposed project, followed by review by City Council, and alternatively, if council prefers to provide direction about how the project should be revised, council could direct staff to work with the applicant with revising the project consistent with the City Council's direction, and then proceed with design review and environmental review before bringing the project back for council's consideration. Staff believes that following project refinements would result in a more pedestrian-friendly mixed-use development. These include bringing the commercial buildings up towards the street and create fully connected and contiguous sidewalks and access points throughout the site, improve public amenities and gathering spaces for the surrounding neighborhood, increase the size of a market to accommodate a grocery store, and eliminate the gas stations, car wash, and drive-throughs. to accommodate a grocery store, and eliminate the gas stations, car wash, and drive-throughs. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I bring it back to council for any questions and introductory remarks. Do I have any questions from my colleagues? No? Okay. Seeing none at this time, I will go ahead and allow for the applicant presentation.
Just one second, we're going to pull it up. Otherwise, I can advance the slides. You just say next slide. Not a...
Thank you, appreciate that.
Sure. I'll put the timeline as well, which you'll see right on the front of the...
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff. This is, this is what tangling with staff will result in. My name is Tom Cohen. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, an app, a palant Ashton Development, and it's an honor and a pleasure to present our project to you this evening. Tonight, we have with us the project team, Ahmad Gadari, David Scott, Rosie Hernandez, Chuck Cohen, Larry Turner, and Larry Tangi. Hopefully Larry Tangi will have some time to provide some particular expertise in the retail area. We want to thank staff, despite our differences about the project, we respect each other and everyone on staff. They've been honest in their assessment and given us a platform in which to get your feedback this evening as to whether this project can move forward. Specific Plan 5, as you have heard, was adopted in 1996, 29 years ago. It was a plan that envisioned over 60% of the 23-plus acres being commercial retail development and a balanced residential some sort. What has transpired over these past 29 years is that the city's vision changed. It changed due to increased demand for housing, particularly affordable housing. It changed due to the changing economy, the changes in how consumers do business and buy products and services. And many events have happened. 2001, we had a national tragedy. 2008, we had the greatest recession this country has ever seen or felt since the Great Depression. Amazon and social media entered our lexicon in the late 20th century and has exploded and changed everything about how we shop and purchase our everyday needs. COVID happened, and of course, we're in a housing crisis. And in California and in Ventura County especially, we're in an affordable housing crisis. Put all of that together, and you can understand how these 23 acres, a small microcosm of our community, transformed from what was envisioned 29 years ago. Would you mind please going to slide number four? I'm rushing through it. Past city councils believed housing was the better option and amended the specific plan or approved variances four separate times to make it happen, thereby reducing the commercial acreage from 60% to 20%. Now 80% of the 23 acres is residential with one exception, a very small convenience store located within one of the residential projects. And our project is introducing more residential with our 49-unit apartment of project. New slide number five. The specific plan area has contributed a significant amount of affordable housing with the projects built by Cabrillo Economic Development Corp., the Housing Authority, and we will be providing an additional eight affordable units, five low-income units, and three very low-income units. So now we have a remnant four-plus acres that Mr. Gadari purchased in 2016 with the ideal, excuse me, the idea of developing a commercial retail center. When he examined the specific plan, studied its permitted uses matrix, talked with city and the neighborhood groups at over 12 separate meetings, there was a desire to bring a supermarket and a coffee proprietor to the property. Mr. Gadari brought an expert, Mr. Tangi with CB Richard Ellison, to talk to the industry and other retailers about the property determined interest. Mr. Tangi will provide you with more in-depth information about his efforts. Suffice it to say that a large, large supermarket operators all said no. And the primary reason given was that the parcel is of insufficient size for a full-size grocery store. And then when you carve out the city requested 1.1 acres signed for the apartment project component, that leaves three and a half acres to work with, which is clearly too little land area to build a full-size grocery store. New slide number six, please. However, Mr. Gadari did not give up on the idea of a market and in fact is proposing a full product market with fresh vegetables and fruits, meats, breads, et cetera, just like you would find in any market. New slide number seven. He's proposing an almost 7,000-square-foot market, very similar in size and type to the recently opened Ventura Ranch Market on Main Street. As previously mentioned, the city also urged Mr. Gadari to offer more housing, which we are showing on our plans and which we intend to produce eight additional affordable units, which will be incomers, which will be restricted by covenant to 55 years. A lot of market research went into the other proposed uses, as I said, the quick-serve, high-quality restaurant, coffee purveyors, and the service station. And these uses are all specifically identified as allowed uses in the specific plan matrix. Slide number eight, please. Automotive and accessories, gasoline sales are allowed with a use permit, and the car wash as an ancillary use is allowed, food and beverage retail sales are permitted, that includes the market and coffee shop, and dining establishments, fast service, drive-up are all allowed with a use permit. Mr. Gadari and his team have spent nine years since acquiring the property striving to find the right tenants. The uses were chosen because the uses are what the marketplace is telling them will work and what the residents in the Saticoy Village and surrounding areas want and need. The residents asked for market and the coffee operator, and Mr. Gadari will deliver those uses. The city asked for housing, and we will provide the housing, including a community room with internet access and computers available to the future tenants. And we will provide a health, healthy option quick-serve restaurant that provides for the working families who are on the go with children involved in sports, dance, and other after-school activities that live locally in the area. And the service station is a use that will provide for the needs of the residents of Saticoy Village as well, as well as other residents on the south side of the 126 who utilize State Highway 118 to get to the Highway 126 and travel west and eastbound. In addition, the service station is going to provide electrical vehicle charging stations, which are not presently available in the area, and will have the ability to convert to a larger footprint in the future when gasoline-operated vehicles become less relevant. And the restaurant and coffee tenants are proposing drive-through because that is what their customers demand today, and that is what the bottom-line financial success requires for these tenants. The city has, by last count, 17 quick-service restaurants that have drive-through service and four Starbucks stores have drive-through service windows. Thus, it's not unusual to request the drive-through service, and in fact, it is now the norm. With respect to the service station and the ancillary car wash component, we had, we identified four service stations in the city with convenience stores that have installed car washes at Citrus, Mills, Harbor, and Victoria. Each car wash utilizes water-wise systems and environmental-wise systems that make it far, a far superior approach than at-home car washing by capturing and recycling water and capturing dirt, grease, wax, and other contaminants. And a clarifier. Thus, the project before you is practical and marketable. It is consistent in all respects with the specific plan, especially when you consider the significant changes the specific plan has undergone in its 29 years of existence. And the proposal reflects the realities of retail marketing in 2025 and the changing lifestyles of multiple generations. There are no neighborhood compatibility issues with the proposed uses, no health and safety or welfare impacts that warrant denial of the project. There are no noise, odor, vibration, or other nuisance impacts from the proposed uses that will affect the residents. Raised burns with abundant landscaping and trees along Wells will be constructed to screen buildings and drive-through lanes from passersby. And the buildings are sited adjacent to Wells Road with the exception of the market building. The buildings are consistent with the specific plan's design requirements, including height of the buildings. And the project has dramatically improved pedestrian access and walkability throughout the specific plan area, as well as vehicular circulation. Just to highlight a few project benefits, we're completing the Saticoy Village specific plan with a beautiful gateway entry. We've got housing units, including affordable units. Mr. Gadari is investing approximately $3 million in street upgrades, including decell lanes, sidewalks for improved pedestrian access, and opening up of Snapdragon to allow direct access to Wells. We're creating jobs, increased sales and property taxes, green construction practices. And additional parking is being provided beyond city code at the citizen, at the residents' requests. Specific plans are not intended to be promises or assurances of deed or de restrictions of the implementation of their subject matter. They simply provide more detail and direction for defined locations than generalized zoning. And it's clear that the city councils over the last 29 years understood this and made changes based on the community-wide need and desires at the time. We hope that the presentation convinces you that when, that, excuse me, that what we are offering is for the benefit of all Venturans and especially those in Saticoy Village and the surrounding neighborhoods. And we ask for your support and vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I bring it back to council for any questions at this time of the presentation or staff? No questions? I'm sorry? Nope? Okay.
We were just commenting that we'd like to hear public comments.
Sure, yeah. So then we'll go ahead and move on to public comments. Mr. City Clerk, did we receive any emails related to this item?
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive emails. Those have been posted in the supplemental packet, and we have seven speakers this evening on item number six.
Okay, I'll go ahead and take public comment at this time.
Our first speaker is Casey Rodriguez, followed by Kristen Kessler, Don Price, Janice Wilks, Kathleen Wheeler. Speakers will have three minutes.
I kindly ask council vote no to this project. It is crucial we welcome environmentally friendly projects. This proposed project is not. East in Ventura does not need another gas station. Such as Drive already has two well-functioning gas stations. Please take our two recent gas station leaks on Harbor as example to the dangers and risk we will be taking if we allow another station come in. Along with already knowing gas stations creates excess greenhouse gas emissions, air and water pollution, as well as environmental impacts due to fuel extraction, transportation, and filling up. East in Ventura also does not need the air pollution from three drive-throughs. One drive-through wrecks havoc on our environment alone. I'm stunned that there's three drive-throughs possible. Please deny this. With becoming more and more diligent on making stands for climate change, allowing three drive-throughs will be taking a gigantic step backwards. Long lines of idling for the drive-throughs and gas stations are not safe. These lines will emit exhaust fumes, release harmful pollutions like carbon dioxide, nitrogen dioxide, and other matter into the atmosphere, all affecting climate change by trapping heat in the atmosphere. I personally don't know anyone who would enjoy living in these areas. The traffic alone to be going home into this area would be something a lot of people would not have the patience to deal with. I ask you kindly to deny this project. Thank you.
Kristen Kessler, followed by Don Price.
Hi, good evening. I urge you to follow the recommendations made by staff and the planning commission and deny this project. I lived in the Saticoy neighborhood for eight years from 2016 to 2024, during which time I attended many East Ventura Community Council meetings. I never heard one attendee advocate for another gas station or fast food. Residents consistently advocated for a grocery store or healthy dining options at Wells and Darling. They also mentioned that another gas station was unnecessary, as there are already two on Wells and Citrus. This project willfully ignores the needs of the community and contradicts the Saticoy Village specific plan, which, as was stated, calls for walkable neighborhoods, community gathering spaces, and businesses that cater to community needs. A gas eat-and-go establishment will have the opposite effect. I also urge you, council, to bear in mind that the Planning Commission just approved a third gas station to be constructed on Wells and Telegraph. The one positive thing about this project is the housing, so why not expand it? That would create more affordable units than the current eight. The market could stay, but the other aspects of the project serve no purpose other than what is easiest for the developer. As such, I urge you to consider community needs and deny the project as is. Thank you.
Don Price, followed by Janice Wilks.
Madam Mayor, council, my name is Don Price. I'm a resident of East Ventura in District 5. Some aspects of this project are positive, as has been said. One of those is housing. We need more housing. Forty-nine units is not many. Seven is low income is not impressive, but it's still a positive. Also, the EV charging in this area is also welcome. However, the 16-nozzle gasoline station is completely unnecessary, as has been said. There is already plenty enough, plenty of fossil fuel distribution in this area. I want to mention environmental review. On page eight of the applicant's amendment to the Saticoy Village specific plan, in section 2D, it states that this project will be exempt from CEQA as an infill development. Some requirements for this exemption apply, but one does not. To qualify, this guideline, section 15332, says, "Approval of the project will not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality." I can speak to air quality. I am retired from the Ventura County APCD. The gas station is a source of air pollution and will require a Ventura County APCD permit. So there is air quality impact there, and there's also drive-through emissions that have been stated. So the infill development exemption does not seem to apply, and an EIR may be required. Although there is no evidence in the environmental review, of environmental review that I have seen so far in the council package, the proposed resolution does mention EIR 3-2158920. No information about this document is available, so it's hard to know if it applies or not. So there are questions there. In closing, please do not approve this project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janice Wilks, followed by Kathleen Wheeler.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good to see you again, neighbor, council. My name is Janice Wilks. I live in East Ventura at the farm. I'm having a bit of a Groundhog Day moment here. I was here in January. I spoke in these very chambers with Planning Commission, and I made my objections to this project very clear, and they still stand, all of them. We homeowners do not want or need more gas stations, fast foods, car wash, et cetera, at this location. The Planning Commission unanimously agreed, and it was denied. In addition, unfortunately, a new project eerily similar to this one was just approved by council at Wells and Telegraph. And that's just a short stroll away from Wells and Darling. So certainly, we do not need another very similar situation. So why are we here? Please deny this project. I just added a few things because after listening to their proposal, it, any changes that they made, as far as I can tell, does not have any benefits for the residents at all. Instead, the project only will be the benefactor. It relies totally on the 126. That's why multiple gas stations, way too many. My, the speakers before me about the environmental impacts, I totally agree. I disagree about one thing they said about the pass, about a grocery store, which is something we really do need there. There is enough room. I don't know why they keep saying there isn't. At first glance, maybe there isn't, but I came from Santa Monica and right off the 10 freeway, I think it was at Cloverfield or 20th. Big Ralph's Grocery Big Ralph's Grocery Store, very little on-street parking, but all the parking was built underneath. We could do the same. Thank you.
Kathleen Wheeler, followed by Wayne Morgan.
Good evening. As a Ventura citizen with a vested interest in how our city grows, I urge you to consider carefully your vote on this project. Please don't be swayed by this project's very small apparent upside, when there are so many problems with it that have been outlined here. Don't fall prey to the temptation to pursue development for development's sake. For example, a grocery store would be good, but fast food, drive-through restaurants, not so much. Housing would be great, but 49 units, when many more than that could be built on the same lot, and we desperately need affordable housing. A new gas station when there are several nearby and when you've committed to being good stewards of the environment. This project flies in the face of the CARP and your own stated goals, as well as your vision for the future as outlined in the general plan. It flies in the face of residents' wishes, who want a community vibe versus a bedroom community commuter hub. It flies in the face of the city's need for more than a token amount of housing hidden within a problematic project. And it flies in the face of our urgent need for a clean energy transition now, a need that is not going to be met and, in fact, is going to be sabotaged by more gas pumps. If you vote for it, then it also flies in the face of those who are acting in your behalf, the planning commission. And I don't know what the Green Team is saying, but I suspect that they have concerns. You seven are the firewall against misguided, poorly-designed development projects that fail to represent resident wishes, housing needs, environmental goals, and the community's best interests. Thank you.
Wayne Morgan, followed by our final speaker, Spencer Noren.
I agree with staff that this development is too automobile-centric. Too much land is devoted to the gas station and the car wash. That could be better used for housing. Forty-nine units is not that many units. Taking that land that's used for the car wash, we can increase that significantly. I also have trouble with just the traffic pattern. If you notice, the gas station has the four islands, but how do, how do the cars get in and get around? And in the market parking, I mean, it's almost like you have to go through the gas station to get to the market. So I, I have some issues with the traffic pattern. It's kind of hard to see on the drawings how that actually works, but I do have concerns about just how the traffic, with all those cars possibly in the gas station, how they're going to get in and out. And I'm also for a bigger market. That area desperately needs healthy foods, and I think if we can increase the size of the market, that would really be an asset to that area. So as it stands right now, I would recommend to reject that, the project as it stands.
And our final speaker, Spencer Noren. Spencer, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Michael. Can you hear me?
We can, go for it.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I wanted to first stop by, thank you, staff as well, especially Director Diamond, and remind ourselves that this was the first project, I believe, that she reminded us in 20 years that she's denied. And that was within the community's spirit. And today, I speak for myself, as a resident on Eastern Ventura, but also at one point, the current secretary of the East Ventura Community Council, and one time served as vice chair is at East Ventura Community Council, as this conversation has been going on for years in our community. And I just want to give council a little reminder of where we were and how we've gotten here, and a few things after hearing tonight's presentation that still proves disconnect in how we want to deny this project that we see before us today. Talking about drive-throughs and the numbers of drive-throughs being in the city of Ventura, how that's a norm. We all know, going through our general plan, and by following the lead of other public speakers tonight, that we're trying to get away from what might have been the norm of having and creating new pollutants in our community, especially when our lower-income, underserved areas, as we mentioned tonight, through Satacuy and East Ventura. We really need to make a stand today to back up our residents, what we want to see in the future, which is community meeting space along with good business. Dreams of grocery stores, dreams of places to buy groceries and healthy food, kind of went away, and we need renewed invigoration from our council members of that, especially learning about how there will be a new gas station at Telegraph and Wells, where at one time we knew there used to be a 76 gas station. We needed kind of a Wells corridor master plan. We didn't get that, but you can back us up by denying this project again tonight, looking for that we don't want drive-throughs, we want quality restaurants. We want places that seniors and youth on e-bikes can come together, and we don't want more pollutions on areas that we need. And the last question I would ask from this presentation is, when did staff say we needed housing? I've been in every meeting that I know of, and while the community might need housing throughout our community, I would like to ask where officially it was directed that we've ever talked about needing housing in this new area. It's never been discussed, as I know of, at an EVCC meeting or on the record, so I just don't know where that information came from as a whole. Thank you so much for your time. Have a great evening.
That concludes public comment on item number six.
Thank you. With that, I will move on to the project applicant, final applicant, uh, comments, I'm sorry. Final comments from the applicant. You have five minutes.
Would you like us to bring the PowerPoint up again?
Not necessary, thank you. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you. Couple things. First of all, I keep hearing fast food, fast food, fast food. We, we have, we can't commit to you tonight who the future tenants are going to be, but the commitment that Mr. Godari has made to the neighborhood is that he's looking at, at high-quality, uh, future food users that, that are focused on, uh, good foods, quality foods, not, not the McDonald's, not the Carl's Juniors. We're talking about, uh, healthy foods. And the, the other option is, is a coffee purveyor, names that you guys know and have heard of. Also want to emphasize the following. This project is providing housing, and it is providing affordable housing that the city still desperately needs. We are, we don't have a lot of land here to work with, and this specific plan, you know, when originally conceived, did have as a major component, retail. And so we're, we're limited in, in the amount of land area that we have, so configuring how to utilize that land while also incorporating the request to provide the housing, the palette, the canvas is, is, is difficult to work with. But what we've tried to do is, along the, the parkways and the edges, is enhance the landscaping to provide throughout the project, specific emphasis to beautify it, to provide a serene view, while screening the buildings and the drive-through lanes to, to, to create that, that small-town feel and, and beautify it. The, the third thing is that the project is going to be contributing significant dollars to improving the infrastructure there with pedestrian access, with street improvements that will, that'll enhance that whole area. And then to address the market, Mr. Tangi can do this far better than I, but there has been significant amount of time and energy studying this and talking to the, to the, to the majors. There just is, has been, uh, a constant no put up each and every time, saying the site is not suitable for what they, for what they need to develop a full-scale market. But we are bringing a full, full-service, walkable market for those folks that live in that neighborhood and will serve the needs. And we're, we're bringing other retail uses that we think the community has asked for. So we, again, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. We humbly request your support. I did want to, somebody brought up CEQA, and we, there's been no environmental work done on this project yet because we're here looking for feedback, and if we get positive feedback about moving this project along, the CEQA will be evaluated. But I did want to say that if, in fact, this does move forward, we, we would like staff to give due consideration to, uh, the, the Class 32 infill exemption. We know that we have criteria that needs to be looked at. The gentleman from the Air Pollution Control District stated it very clearly that air quality has to be evaluated, and it will be. And as will several other criteria that needs to be evaluated, but the, and there are also exceptions to the exemption that have to be evaluated. So there's, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done, and it will be done, and it'll be done properly. The city will make sure that it is done properly. So with that, I will conclude my remarks and available to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. I'll bring it back to council for final questions. Councilmember Schumacher, followed by Deputy Mayor Halter.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your presentation and the applicant for being here. I just have a few questions for the staff first, and maybe I can invite the applicant afterwards if I'm not, if I still need more clarification. So in regards to the market, I am having trouble envisioning what that looks like. Are there examples that you can help me kind of refer back to or refer to as to what, what, you know, I can see that is? Because I understand that Trader Joe's is about 12,000 square feet, and then a Rouse would be like 30,000 square feet. So this is what, half of a Trader Joe's? And is there like a, you know, like another store that I can refer to?
Thank you, Councilmember Schumacher. So one store that we went out and looked at and thought that was a good example of a, a small kind of grocery-type of store was Ventura Ranch Market located in Midtown Main Street. That is just a little under 10,000 square feet. So, and you know, I wouldn't think that anything smaller than that would be able to provide everything that you would want in a kind of a small grocery store, but that's where we were, we were, we were, we were acceptable at that experience, so there, there, that's another example.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenbrandt. And then in regards to the Ventura Ranch Market, that's not in front of a gas station, though?
That's correct.
Okay. So as far as the actual gas station, are EVs planned for that area as well?
There are EV chargers proposed to be as part of that gas station.
Okay, thank you. And then, so if I may, I, I'm hearing from the applicant that, you know, the community is asking for drive-throughs and a gas station, and then the community is telling or having public comments in regards to, no, that's not what they said. So I, I believe that, if I may direct my question to Councilmember McReynolds, I know that you attend East Ventura Community Council. What have you heard in regards to what the community is, is, can you confirm what the wants and needs are for the community?
Unfortunately, well, a grocery store is a, is a huge need. In regards to this development in particular, I apologize, I have never attended a meeting where this, I just, I don't know why, but I do attend the meetings, but, and I know that this project has been before. Unfortunately, I have missed the one or two times that it has been there, so I can't confirm. But I can tell you that the grocery store is, is definitely, yeah.
Got it.
And then just as a reference, specifically, this, this development is in the mayor's district in particular.
Mayor, were you, may I ask you if you can help kind of shed some light as to if you were in those meetings and kind of help us understand what the community was asking for?
I, I participated in a meeting, but this was years ago, before I was even on council. And at the time, there were concerns with the project in regards to the gas stations or the gas station. And certainly in District Four, the need for some sort of grocery store is top priority. And I know that I have gone back and forth with staff as well in terms of what can be done. You know, we've gone from Trader Joe's to Amazon Fresh to Ventura Market, just trying to figure out what can fit there. And I know that from conversations for the grocery store or convenience store, there's been talk about working with local growers to have their produces sold in this location.
Got it, okay. And then back to the staff, I'm curious as to, is this following the specific plan, the, the proposal that we have today?
Thank you once again. It's more on the, the policies of each plan that where the, this project is, is not meeting. So much of the policy language is about pedestrian, walkable, connecting the, to the neighborhood, and this project is just auto-oriented with the, with the Wells Road as a highway in mind. And so as the applicant pointed out, if you look through a land use table, those, the uses that are being proposed are allowed, some with use permits. It wasn't necessarily a, at the use level, it was more about, did the project meet the goals of the documents that we used to, to analyze the projects?
Great, thank you.
Thank you for that. Deputy Mayor Halter?
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff, for presentation in public, for all the comments. Okay, so just looking at some of the details, it appears that on the residential, it, most of the parking would be under the building, and you have a courtyard, a raised podium courtyard in the middle of the building that sits on top of that parking structure, and the building goes up from there. That's correct?
That's correct.
And just out of curiosity, do you know how many parking spots that is? Is that, because it's 49 units, is it, you need one and a half per unit or two?
It, I believe it's pretty typical to, for the rest of the city, which would be depending on the number of bedrooms. Typically, that's one space for one bedrooms, and then two spaces for two bedrooms and more.
Okay. And then as far as the, let's see, restaurant spaces, let's see. Is there a difference between a sit-down restaurant and a drive-through restaurant as far as the needed parking for it?
There, it can get, depending on the size of the restaurant, that's really where you see sometimes differences. And, but in general, dining establishments are pretty similar to fast counter service. It comes down to the size of the seating area. So fast food restaurants, sometimes you have less seating area, so sometimes that will require less parking.
Same question in regards to a, a car wash. Is that something where people are driving through or going through? Is there less parking needed per square foot for a car wash than there is for more business?
That's, that would be like a typical commercial square footage of, usually it's like 100 to 300 square feet of building, buildable area that would trigger a, a parking space.
I see. And then as far as on this location, I, I have seen grocery stores, some up north I'm familiar with where there- with where there's parking underneath the building. Now, I know that that's more expensive, obviously, but I'm just curious if there's, how high is the water table out there? Because that's usually one of the considerations is, I know we have that problem downtown, that the water table's only a few feet below the top of the ground. And so, that adds even more cost to it. So, I'm not quite sure if that's how feasible that thought is?
I've had a few projects in this area where I don't remember the water table coming up like it does in downtown. There are other parts of town where it has come up as well, I know near like Barnes &amp; Noble, around that area as well. I am not familiar with if the water table is an issue in this specific area, though.
Okay. And the EV chargers, are those required for this development? Or are they something that is being proposed, just whatever number they would like to propose?
Well, we don't see it in the zoning code at this time, but it's in the building code. And so, it's, at this point, it becomes a requirement with new development.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, was the entire planning commission present for this discussion and decision?
I believe we were missing one or two, but let me check real quick.
Out of five, okay. And, let's see. I think those are most of my questions at this point, just trying to better understand the project.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds, followed by Councilmember Mangone.
Thank you. Can you go to Slide 3? And just let me know how, how does the staff's recommendation support the strategic priority of economic vitality and development?
Well, thank you, Commissioner McReynolds, Councilor McReynolds. As a commercial development, this would be something that is, would contribute to the economy, local economy, and vitality of an area.
Isn't your recommendation denial?
Sorry?
Isn't your recommendation denial?
Yes.
So, how does it?
As the subject matters. So, if you had to pick which category does it fit under as, you know, what type of project is that this would be within this area?
Okay. Let's go to Slide 13. So, I think we're getting a little off track here. I get we're in the specific plan, but we're also working on a general plan, and we have the parcel across the street that we're actually pre-zoning to do a grocery store on it. So, there's all this focus on this little parcel, but we're actually trying to incentivize, and we're trying to put the zoning in place to build a larger grocery store on the parcel directly across the street on it. So, I'm getting a little confused, like, so the staff recommendation, if we go to Slide 19, is you want to see a larger grocery store, but then we have a parcel directly across the street, and we're asking for a full-blown grocery store. So, do you believe that that's inconsistent or consistent?
Yeah, I don't see an inconsistency there where, you know, we currently don't have a project on the other property. We don't, and I believe it's outside city as well, so.
We're pre-zoning it.
But what I'm saying is that future seems to be uncertain as like where, you know, when in the future would you ever see a project? The community right now is asking and communicating their need for a grocery store now. This part of the specific plan has always been intended for commercial development. So, whether it's, you know, inappropriate for this project to provide a grocery store, I don't see that. So, I see as asking for the grocery store now as appropriate.
So, on the third bullet point, increasing the size of the market to accommodate a grocery store, what is the economic analysis that staff did that said that that would work?
If I could just jump in, hi. We didn't do any heavy economic analysis in regards to the market, as we didn't receive any to review as part of our application review process. The conversations we had about the viability, economic viability of a market was circumstantial, and we did have our economic development team look at data that was shared peripherally with, or outside of the application packet from the team, just to get a sense of what the numbers were saying on both sides. I want to provide a little more context as to where we are in this process. So, this application has been in the hopper for a while. And as regulators and facilitators, we're trying to fit it into these boxes. And, you know, in this case, a specific plan that is very pedestrian-oriented. This project is very auto-oriented. Amendments from, our specific plan amendments aren't necessarily discouraged, provided that they can meet the intent of the plan. So, after much back and forth with the applicant team, we were in a position, staff, that we're not hitting a majority of the marks we need to hit for consistency with a specific plan. We're at a point where we can deem your project complete, but we're probably leaning towards denial. Next would be environmental review. At that time, we were forecasting a mitigated negative declaration of an environmental document, which is a substantial investment. And they had already spent much time and money in the project. So, this is a temp check, if you will, that the applicant has requested at this point in the process to see, can this project be supported before we invest even more money based on the evolution of the area, based on the past 29 years? Are we still wanting what the 1996 vision of the specific plan wanted? Are we willing to bend any of those requirements? And if so, what can we bend with? How can we move this project forward and ask the applicant to invest additional funds to complete the environmental review process? That's that EIR case number that one of the members of the public mentioned, that's an application number. And then, every legislative action, such as a specific plan amendment, requires environmental review. We haven't looked at any exemptions with this project because it has always been more or less assumed that a level of environmental document would be required based on the specific plan amendment. The timing of the project across the street is still unknown. It's out there, and we hope we can get a larger market there as well, but we haven't have any timing with that. And so, we have to process in accordance with what we have before us today. So, be it whatever your direction is, supporting the denial based on what, how we can fit it into this box, or rather, we can't fit it into this box, whether or not you're okay with it not fitting to this box, maybe we need to change the size of the box, sorry, I'm going over time, or if there's portions that we can make it to where we feel that the applicant can invest more time, money, and energy into this vision. I hope that helps.
One last question. I know, I know my time's up, but can we go to Slide 16? So, if the applicant brought that project in on the left, would that be approved?
Councilmember McReynolds, we did have conversations about how the project could be revised to more similarly match what's specifically in the specific plan. I think it's important to note that it only shows one drive-through. It shows most of the parking being situated off the street rather than present at Wells Road. So, I think that elements of this, if it were more in keeping with their project, we would be more supportive. But right now, it is a disconnect from even that layout in the illustrative plan, which is just really kind of a guiding document, not a mandatory document to follow.
So, our guiding document tells them to build a parking lot, basically?
Well, I think there's a variety of different policies and procedures that, when applied in reality, would make this project look dependent on the project. It would be different from this, I think, in a variety of ways. But I do think that if we were to focus more on a pedestrian-friendly design, that would bring the buildings towards Wells Road. And maybe even a similar design project would have similar parking, but would be less focused on the automobile.
So, the statement is that the design on the left is less focused on the automobile?
Correct.
Got it.
Thank you. Before I go on to Councilmember Mangone, I did see our Economic Development Director standing for a bit. I don't know if you wanted to chime in?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our team up here is doing a phenomenal job. I just noticed that you brought up the economic vitality goal as to why this kind of aligns. And I, and I think that really what we are trying to focus on with economic development is the amount of space that there is on the east end, and the proper amenities and the proper diversity of businesses that you can bring in that have that high-quality public space, and also have the quality of life that's necessary for our east end community. And so, I think with that, what the economic development team and how it doesn't quite support the strategic plan or the priority, is that it doesn't bring in that necessity, necessary quality of life and diversity of businesses.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Mangone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. And thank you for the, Mr. Cohen, for the presentation. I would like to ask about the, what was staff's position on the recently approved gas station car wash mini-mart on Telegraph and Wells Road?
Councilmember Mangone, we did support that project in that location. It had previously been a 76 gas station some years ago as well.
Okay. And are you guys looking at multiple projects in one corridor when you were considering approval or denial? So, for, to be more specific, was that in mind when you kind of made the decision to deny this project? The potential to have another car wash mini-mart gas station right up the street?
I think we know about the projects in the vicinity. I think what's important about that project is it's not within the same specific plan area.
Okay.
In the same level that this development has, different standards set for it. And so, I think if it were in the same plan and we were analyzing it in the same way, the same concerns might be approached, but it doesn't fall within the same specific plan area.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos, followed by Councilmember Duran.
So, I'm also curious if, if the developer brought any other options to you about possibly more housing or a larger store without the gas station? Economic area without the drive-throughs? Was any of that brought to you or discussed with the developer?
Thank you, Member Campos. Well, as mentioned, this project's been in for a long time, through different iterations. The residential has increased. So, I think it started off with very little or no residential, went up to, I think, 10 units, and then now up to 49. The rest of the project really has remained virtually unchanged, though, the gas station, the drive-throughs.
So, I believe some of the speakers mentioned, and also, we've discussed it here a little bit, one of our strategic goals is to focus more on climate. So, the trees are wonderful, but the gas stations counteract that. The businesses could actually be expanded into one or two restaurants, morning and evening, without the car-centered area, and bring people from the neighborhood walking. There's a lot of reasons that this project could be better, and there are a lot of reasons that I see staff denied it. I'm concerned that, that we heard from speakers tonight, and not one of them said, we want this development. And more and more, we're doing things that make us look like we don't care about the residents of the city. So, that's a concern I have with this project. I think we need to listen carefully.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, staff, for your presentation. Doesn't this project help meet our infill housing goals without requiring expansion into new land?
Councilmember Duran, yes, the housing component of this project would help us meet our housing needs, and we do support this aspect of the project.
Okay. So, denying the project obviously wouldn't put us forward to our goals. And I want to just make note, too, that of the 49 units, we have almost 15%, if I'm not mistaken, inclusionary housing or affordable housing in that?
I believe so. Yes, correct.
And this was, this was on the books before our inclusionary housing ordinance was even, even existed. So, they wouldn't legally need even do that, would they?
The, the part of the project with the 49 units was a later revision, so that did come in after inclusionary housing ordinance was in effect.
Okay. Thank you. And wouldn't bringing more daily-use businesses to Satacui actually reduce car trips by offering nearby options? I mean, I would think that the more we offer in that area, the less we're going to be driving out, going to other places to get what we want. Because I understand there's restaurants there and coffee?
I think dependent upon which users or which tenants are used in these different restaurants, it might limit the amount of folks that would leave the area for those particular uses.
Thank you. And then, one last question. Have other developments in the specific plan area received amendments?
Thank you, Member Duran, yes. It was typical of a variance or some amendment as we saw projects come through. Typically, it would be regarding like setbacks or how the parking was configured along the Those were the most common types.
Okay. So, so why should the applicant be treated differently?
Well, once again, those projects still met the policies and goals of the plan. They were the pedestrian-friendly, urban, walkable type of projects that weren't oriented towards automovil use. So, that was the big difference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Councilmember McReynolds, followed by Councilmember Schumacher.
Thank you. Could you go to Slide 8? So, in regards to the housing, the governor signed the budget yesterday. So, we now have AB 130, AB 1, or SB 133. If the applicant decided to do all residential, does that just become by right, no secret review, just entirely automatic at that point?
We are wrapping our arms around that legislation that recently passed, that just passed 24 hours ago. We're still wanting to get a briefing on that and find out what, and what process do projects will be considered under that expedited path. So, I do not have an answer for you with that right now.
Do you have a basic understanding of what the new legislation does?
Basic, yes. And that, or, oh, I'm sorry.
You got backup?
Yeah. I got backup?
I, I, I don't have a whole lot more to add, unfortunately, because this is, it's brand-new legislation. But my read of it so far as applied to high housing is that it doesn't substantially change the lay of the land. It changes the requirements for infill developments to some extent, and changes the scope of that exemption. Beyond that, it does a lot of other things that have nothing to do with housing.
So, how would it affect this? Do you have a?
Well, I was, your question, as I understand it, was would this be, if it was?
They just decided to do housing?
Yeah. If it was 100% housing, this, the new law would not have any impact that I could see, I don't think, on the process. There would still be, to the extent there would be any Sequa analysis, that would likely still need to be done.
So, I have a question for the applicant, if I can ask the, and then specifically on the grocery store, in terms of the viability of a larger, you know, on this piece of property, is a grocery store a viable economics solution?
It is not. And if, if I may, I'd like to bring up Mr. Tangi, if that's okay? Because Mr. Tangi is the person who actually spoke to these grocer, grocery stores directly, who provided the feedback that's informed us as to how we can move forward.
I don't know the rule on that.
I mean, we've heard from the city's Economic Development Office, I think it'd be reasonable.
Mayor, if I, if I may, the, if the public hearing's not closed, if the council would like to hear from someone, they may. The public comment time is closed, the applicant's time has closed, so it really is the council's prerogative, not the applicant's.
So, okay. So, you would have to?
Yeah. If we could hear from, if that's all right, if we could hear from?
Their?
Yeah, the professional.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I just want to make sure it's copacetic.
Thank you.
And while you're, if you could talk about the parcel across the street also?
So, I've been involved with both of these parcels for many years. Both of these landowners are my clients. Both of these landowners are my clients, on and off, marketing the spaces for groceries stores. Literally, the specific one that we're talking about now for a grocery store is way too small. I mean, they want six acres as a minimum to do their full-service grocery store operation. And many of these grocery stores also want to do gas, and in that case, they want another acre. And this is for the likes of like Von's, Albertson's, Walmart, Neighborhood Market, not the Super Walmart. But that's what you're dealing with size-wise, and this does not have the capacity to do that whatsoever. Even for the smaller, like Trader Joe's you mentioned, they're very specific about how they lay out their parking. They don't want to be laid out and they're parking off on the deeper end of the parking lot. It just doesn't work. It's not convenient. So over the years, I've marketed this property and the one adjacent to it for probably 25 years. I know all the grocery people because of this, a lot of it is, just because I call them all the time. Each time someone's looking at making a run on it, we've worked it. We've worked it hard to the nth degree. And it's always been a little periphery, but for the right market, for the right size, it could make some sense. You know, it's, it's going to be detrimental to your other grocery stores there because the pie's only so big. So to even think about putting a small grocery store in here of 7,000 square feet and then follow it up with a 40,000 square footer, you basically put that guy out of business, I think. Unless he's that specifically can get off and specialize in something completely different. If he's just competing for that grocery dollar, he's going to get buried.
I apologize. Could you tell us who you are and what your?
So my name's Larry Tangi. I work with CBRE. I'm a retail broker. I've been doing this for 35-plus years. My first relationship with grocery was literally standing across the street on Wells Road, looking at the property and meeting the head of Von's Real Estate and talking about, "Hey, what do you think about this?" And subsequently, I've done many grocery deals. I mean, currently, I represent Grocery Outlet in Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo County, and I represent Aldi in Ventura County. And prior to that, I did all the Fresh and Easy work throughout all the counties, and before that, I even did Ralph's work.
And I apologize if I can ask one more question.
Sure.
Can you tell us what's going on in the grocery business in, in terms of Kroger and now I'm forgetting, Safeway?
So Kroger and Von's slash Albertson's, it was pulled apart, and I literally asked the guy. I called him six months ago when that was still going on over at Albertson's, and he was going, "Ah, you know, it's really periphery, dah 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 dah." And I called him back two weeks ago just because I knew this was coming up, and I said, "So was it too periphery because you had your merger going on, or what was going on here? Is it business as usual, or what do you want to do?" And he goes, "I'll take a look at it. I'll take a look at not an L-shaped three-acre piece, or 3.7-acre piece, or 4.7-acre piece. They need a minimum of six acres, bottom line. You're not going to get it to lay out right. You're not going to get it to park right." So they are definitely interested in just looking at it. There's also Walmart Neighborhood Market. They're interested. They're saying, "We'll take a look at it. We've been out there before." I don't know if you guys know it, but Walmart actually had that whole 30 acres under contract at one time. And the other one that I really am hopeful for is Stater Brothers, which is a great market, and they are only in Simi Valley at this time, but I've been tracking them for years, and they would be an awesome addition to Ventura.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor. So for the staff, I'm, I'm going to go back to the gas station. Do we usually see an apartment building in front of gas stations? Because there was a public comment in regards to the fumes. Can you comment on that a little?
Councilmember Schumacher, in my mind's eye, looking around the city, I think most of our gas stations are located along larger archery roads, near the freeway on-ramps and off-ramps, some of our busier areas, which tend to have also the commercial districts zoned nearby. I can see probably a few in my mind's eye that are close to residential neighborhoods, but having one that's directly next door, that's probably a rarity.
Would that be a concern for the city in regards to the health of the people living in those apartments?
I think it would definitely be something we would take a look at through the environmental review process. The project you mentioned earlier at the corner of Wells Road, there were special conditions included about noise and making sure that the car wash noises were limited, the hours of operation were limited for that, to make sure that it didn't impact the neighbors to the east of their project. And, and that was on a case-by-case basis, but that would be analyzed through the environmental review.
Thank you. Can I ask the applicant to come up?
Hi there.
Hi there.
So I just, I, I think you confirmed that there will be EV stations in this area. Comparatively between the pumps and the EV stations, are they pretty equal? How many are we talking about?
Give me one second. Yeah. Eight pumps and eight EVs. Eight, the same number, eight EVs. We have eight pumps and eight EV stations.
Thank you.
And there's a total of, I believe, 13 throughout the entire project area. There's, they're not required for the, for the service station, but they are required as part of the apartment project as well as the, the other retail buildings.
Sorry, my math is not mathing. So eight, you said eight, eight, and then now there's 13?
13 total EV charging stations throughout the 4.7 acres.
Not in that location.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So in regards to any public benefit that you wanted to kind of mention to help the community understand what you're providing?
Well, we're, A, we're completing the specific plan, so you'll see a fully developed property, number one. Number two, we were providing 15% affordable, three very low, and, and five low-income units. We're, the, the infrastructure improvements that are all on the public way, we're spending $3 million to accomplish, accomplish that. There are, you know, there is some public space in the middle of the property that's about 2,500 square feet of green space that people can convene. Those are, you know, for a small project like this, it's difficult to go beyond that scope in terms of public benefit. The, there was one comment made earlier about the pedestrian, the intent of the specific plan is providing walkability and pedestrian way. The balance of the specific plan is residential, so you've got pedestrians that are connecting to other pedestrian, you know, other homes and neighborhoods within that. And this is, the idea is that this is connecting that, those neighborhoods to this shopping center, to this market, to these restaurant uses, to this coffee use. So in my view, humbly, I, I believe it is creating pedestrian connectivity, and I believe it does satisfy the intent.
Sure, sure. But no parks or anything like that?
We don't have a park specific to this, and I don't believe there's a park within the specific plan.
Okay. And, okay. And then lastly, I know that with this, it's not a convenience store. Would there be a scenario in which that if you aren't able to fill this building, that it would turn into a convenience store?
No, the, the goal here is, this is going to be a family-run market with all the, all the, all the things that you would find in any grocery store, just being a smaller footprint than, than what Mr. Tangi was talking about in terms of full-scale Ralph's.
Yeah, it just, yeah, when I'm looking at it, it just feels very convenience store-ish. And then just, we would know, we know that with, it sounds like a really great idea, and knowing that convenience stores also have higher prices than traditional grocery stores. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Campos.
So do we know the size of this room we're in? Maybe a staff member back there might be able to estimate, or? I'm trying to really understand clearly 6,000 square feet. Have a reason.
Trying to do our math in our head, Councilmember Campos, I'm sorry. The Ventura Ranch Market, we did a site visit on earlier, and it's about 10,000 square feet. It's much larger than this room, and I would say maybe about, maybe about one and a half times the size of this room.
I think that a comparable market would be maybe Santa Cruz Market, would be closer to about 6,000, 7,000 square feet on the corner of Santa Cruz and Main. Probably closer.
Or the Aldi maybe on Tele, Telephone Road?
The Aldi would, is bigger.
That's also a very.
Leave Aldi slightly larger.
Yeah.
It's larger than Santa Cruz Market, okay.
Correct, yeah.
And could I ask the developer or the applicant, how much of that space is going to actually be grocery space, and how much is going to be used for storage and product behind the scene?
After 7,000 square feet, my name is Ahmad Gaddari with Ashton Development. The 7,000 square feet, the building is 6,800, 6,890 square feet plus or minus 7,000. Approximately 5,600 or so would be actually the sales area, and about 1,500 square feet behind it would be the storage and other requirements.
And is the car wash totally necessary since it's right adjacent to the market?
It, it's an ancillary product that, you know, contrary to what you have heard this afternoon, we have heard from neighbors that they would like to have that service. It's just an ancillary service that's being provided to the customers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, Councilmember Campos, by the power of Google, our chambers is 49,000 square feet. Our council chambers is 49,000? What? 4,900.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's a really large council chamber.
I feel better now, thank you.
I was like, whoa, sorry.
4,900, so bigger than this.
Thank you for the response.
Were those your questions? Yeah. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I have you come back up? I want to talk a little bit more about the grocery store. Could we have that slide for the grocery store? Oh, do you guys, do you have?
Yeah, there should be one on the.
So this is what we're looking at. Tell, tell us what you plan, because you're going to be running it, correct?
Yes.
You and your family.
Yes.
And so tell us what you're planning on having in there. What, what is it that you're going to be selling?
Well, a couple of things. As, you know, fresh produce, we've already have contacted three of the local producers, you know, like that have fresh fruit, fresh products. They've already agreed to come in and bring the products in. That's number one, fresh food. Then we're going to have a meat market, you know, chicken, meat, all, so basically a butcher shop kind of a deal. Then we have a bakery. Then we have, you know, any other products, you know, again, my parents used to have supermarket many, many years ago, and we have developed supermarkets and operated since 1997. This is what we know we can do, and we're going to bring the products in here for fresh products, healthy products for the neighbor, and all the other products. But basically, if you take a look at the category of products, you know, let's say Von's or Ralph's or something, if you take the top, I don't know, let's say 50, 60, or 100, that are items that most people will want to get, you know, readily available readily, and going down to Victoria, you know, Ralph's or something, we'll make sure they're on here. And this is not going to be a convenience store. You know, typical convenience store in the United States is 2,500. This is, you know, we don't want to fill it up with junk, so.
Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask you a quick question?
Uh, sure.
Where do you normally go to get your car washed?
Not on the east end.
Well, because there isn't one out there, correct?
One out there.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
I had a couple of questions before I go to Councilmember Mangone, if that's okay. So I was trying to figure, I, I've heard the phrase, an important phrase, pedestrian-friendly. And currently, I know in, in that area, there aren't any sidewalks. So would this project be bringing in sidewalks for, for our area to be more pedestrian-friendly?
The project does include sidewalks along the perimeter of the project as well as between those different areas of the project that I laid out, yes.
Okay, and then tied to that, I'm trying to figure out, I think Wells Road, it, it's considered a highway, isn't it?
It, yes, it's owned by, it's Caltrans jurisdiction and operates as a highway.
So how would we, with a highway going through there, how would we make that improvement for pedestrian walkability?
So you still provide sidewalk. At that point, it, with the, with the sidewalk, how it's buffered from Wells Road becomes more important, whether it's like landscaping or width or, so there's just different ways, slip lane, frontage road, there, we've seen different iterations in that same situation. That's normally how it's handled.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rosengrin, but didn't Caltrans have, have plans for a deceleration lane if I'm heading north on the 118?
We have seen that there. I don't know if it came from Caltrans or a previous project, but yeah, we have seen that.
That was my next question. Deceleration lane, I interpret that as meaning slow down?
Yes, so like a turn lane, if you will, to make a right or a tail lane to get traffic to slow down from the 118 speed to enter a more neighborhood, community.
Community, right. Because that community is highly populated by seniors. So while pedestrian-friendly is very important, I'm just also curious as to the volume of car usage, because the population, the, some of the homes back there have children as well, and still in, you know, car seats or strollers, but our senior population is quite high as well. So I'm just curious. In my head, I'm thinking, am I going to be seeing seniors walking, or are they going to be driving and wanting to drive to their closest grocery store, coffee, whatever, or what have you? So just curious if that has been looked at or considered.
Mayor, I think that a variety of things have been considered, and we do appreciate the improvements to the pedestrian access. We are concerned about the orientation of the buildings. If, if you ignore the uses there, the orientation of the building does lend itself to being more auto-centered. The maneuverability is really designed for the automobile in this situation. You've got several drive-through lanes that are sort of bifurcating where natural walking paths might flow more fluidly. So I think, you know, absent the uses being considered, the site plan could benefit from having more connectivity, creating more straight or more connected paths that don't get bifurcated by these different driveway and access paths. To me, it reads more like a parking lot rather than a pedestrian-friendly facility. There could be improvements that could be made to make it more connected and make it more centered, and moving the buildings around might be one of those solutions.
And then I, I'd like to hear from the development team. Have you considered what I just asked, or what, what would your feedback be on that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things. In, in hearing the, the feedback that we're getting tonight, there's two thoughts that we'd like to offer. One, with the orientation of the market building, we will move that building to Wells and closer to the corner, closer to, and close to Wells, so that it will more fit with the, and be in line with the other retail buildings that are along Wells, so that it will be a screen to the parking field behind it. I think that will kind of solve what I'm hearing right now. Number two, with the feedback about the market and the size, the size of the market, we'd, we'd been comparing it to the Ventura Ranch Market on Main Street. It's a little smaller. We would be willing to forego the car wash, that space, to enlarge the size of the market to bring it to about 10,000 square foot market. I think that that would. I think that that would do two things. One, one of the concerns we're hearing is the number of drive-throughs. And number two, it gives us a little larger market. We think we can work with that. I think it's more in line with what Ventura Ranch is doing, but anything larger than that is just not feasible. We're not going to find a national tenant to fill that space. It's just not feasible. We've talked to them all, you heard from Mr. Tanji about that. But I think those are two things that we can do tonight and I hope that that addresses some of the concerns we're hearing.
Thank you. If you could, I was going to ask, because I wrote in my notes, there has to be a compromise. And so thank you for bringing that up. I am curious, so if you forego the car wash, how much square footage would that increase the market space for?
To 10,000 square feet.
10,000 square feet.
Two, 10.
Yeah.
Two 10,000.
Yes.
Am I speaking clearly?
Okay.
I'm having trouble.
10,000 square feet.
Wasn't just my arm that got injured.
Okay, thank you for that. And then I had one last question and I didn't write it down and now it escaped me. So I'll go to Councilmember Mangone and then Councilmember McReynolds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cohen?
All right, thank you, sir. I'd like to ask a little bit more about, you know, who's committed or the potential operators here. We already got the questions asked about the grocer. I too often visit Ventura Ranch Market and Santa Cruz Market. 4,000 square feet is small for a market. Santa Cruz being the smaller of the two. You don't go to either of those markets to stock your pantry. You go there to get odds and ends or if you're having a barbecue. I understand the intent behind the market here, but you said, there's a, there's a slide with the photo of Starbucks, so is Starbucks committed to moving in here if this is approved? And then also the drive-throughs. You mentioned no McDonald's. When I think, one issue I have with drive-throughs is just because the food is unhealthy. It's not necessarily, we're moving away from a car-centric, we're trying to move away from a car-centric culture. I, when I think of fast food and drive-throughs, I can't think of any healthy options. So if you could help me out with those two questions.
I'm going to ask Mr. Gaddari to come up and speak to that.
Councilmember Mangone, we have had some interest from Starbucks and we have spoken to a number of the healthier options, you know, like now they say Chipotle and other ones. We haven't solidified any tenants because we don't have an approved project. They, hopefully, if we get your support, then I'm sure we'll have some, you know, healthy options that are out there and we'll share that information with the council just to keep you informed as well. We want something different to come here.
Sure, so, thank you. So if there is potential to have a fast casual restaurant that does not generally have drive-throughs, would one of, would you remove one of the drive-throughs? Say if Chipotle moved in, they didn't want a drive-through, would we have one less or is this kind of?
Economically, it won't work, the project. I mean, we do have another tenant that, you know, the middle, the middle piece has two, a building that's split into two. The one that doesn't have a drive-through, that's a local vendor that has reached out to us and they like to go over there. They don't have a drive-through, you know, they don't need that indicated. But the tenant next door, we, you know, in order to get a tenant that's nationally, you know, recognized and be able to operate, they won't do it these days without the drive-through. That, that's unfortunately.
Yeah, understood. So you do have interest from a local?
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely.
Already for this other?
Absolutely. We get calls from them every, almost every three weeks or so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you. I have a question about the gas station operations. I don't know who would best be to answer that. So talk to me about the Sinclair gas leak that we had on C word and how does, how is that not going to happen here?
Councilmember McReynolds, I don't know the details of that station. I just heard that there's, there was unfortunately a release. What I can tell you is that the recent, the current standards from the state of California is the most stringent, A, in the United States, B, in the world, I think. The new system that's being, we have, we have to install that. Number one is monitored 24/7, not by a human being at all, it's by equipment that's calibrated, monitored, inspected and, you know, checked every month. And you can check with your fire department, who's the underground tank section for a seat of Ventura. This is the new system, or it's not, hasn't been, it's not like, came out yesterday, it's been implemented since about 20 years ago. This new system is not the type that you can override, you know, the minute there's any potential for a mistake shuts on the whole site. It's a double wall system. Everything on the component is double wall. So God forbid if something on the primary, you know, gets ruptured or something, it captures in the secondary containment. It's the same system that is going to be installed at the station that was just approved two weeks ago. But again, I can assure you that the new system, that as I said, 24/7 monitored and also inspected, fire department inspects it, they have it inspected by contractor, certified contractor every single month. And there's a SERES, if you can go online, there's a SERES program that's the state of California and the data and the information all has to be updated into that document, into that database. And the fire department can give you more information on that.
So let's jump, this specific plan is 29 years old. So let's jump forward to the year 2054, 28 years from now.
Okay.
We've transitioned away from all electric, we're all electric now. How, do you pull the tank? How does that work?
Yeah, we just pull the tanks, we put the piping, everything has to come out. You can't just abandon anything in place. Everything comes out and instead of the pumps that are selling fuel, you just replace them with like, you know, EV chargers. The canopy is there for shade, the canopy, intended for canopy is just for shade. That's it, nothing, no other use for it. Just you move the units in place of the existing pumps.
Okay, okay. And then, does somebody have a question? Oh, okay. And then my last question is, one of the commitments that I've tried to make, well, this is my last question for you, but one of the commitments is that when we do something, we're doing it a 21st century building. I mean, I do believe the gas station is a 20th century technology that hopefully we're moving away from. I know there's a clock ticking down. I don't know what's on the clock, but I know it's ticking down on it. But in terms of the building itself, what are you proposing in terms of a 21st century building? Is it all electric? Is it solar?
All of that, all of above. All electric, solar panels, you know, as you know, of course, the top of the building, depending.
I'm talking for the commercial. I realize you're required to do that for the residential.
No, no, even on commercial. For example, on the gas, I'm just going to start from the gas station and going over. On the gas station person, the biggest, the best place for have solar is on the canopy. Perfect place, no interruption, we're going to have solar panels on the canopy. The building itself is all electric, no gas, none of that. And then the heat pump, you know, the system is a heat pump system that's for the HVAC equipment. Then on the other buildings, there are smaller footprint, so because of the air conditioning system and all that we have, we're limited in space for solar panel, but we'll initiate those as well as much as we can with the footprint that we have. But definitely for, of course, residential, you know, it's required anyway. And on the biggest area that we can definitely supply, the canopy itself is a big source of solar availability.
And then regardless, however this proceeds, but, you know, a request that I would have is, I think something missing from, or a potential for your design is the Amazon lockers or some equivalent there?
No.
This neighborhood, you know, would like to see secured package delivery?
Sure.
You know, so I think there's an opportunity there.
Yeah, with the changes in the floor plan that Tom mentioned, we can definitely accommodate for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Halter?
Great, thank you. Could we see slide seven real quick? And it was great when you blew it up actually too, so we can see it a little bit closer. Just looking at the quick service restaurants, what I was looking for was opportunity for outdoor visiting or dining, if you will, but really sitting outside. It looks like there's quite a bit of patio space in front of all three of those buildings lining Wells Road. Am I reading that correctly? And that looks like places where tables can be put or benches and even though those are supposed to be two of the drive-through restaurants. Do you see that?
Councilmember Halter?
Yes.
Yeah, along the, the inside boundary, you're looking at, yeah, kind of like a wider sidewalk area. Yeah, that could definitely be used as some outdoor dining opportunities there.
Judging by the parking spaces, it looks like at least 10 feet wide by 100 feet long and then you have a much wider corner spot. Those are elements that give me some relief from some of the auto-centric aspects of it. I'm also, I know there's a lot of residential that's been built recently all around this area, so I'm just looking at pathways. It's hard to tell, taken out of context, pathways for people to ride their bikes or walk from their homes into this, this location that can offer different commercial services. And all fast food is not all the same. In-N-Out Burger would be, while some people will love it, it can absolutely destroy any pedestrian friendliness of this entire project. So I'd be concerned about that. As far as, I was liking the direction that I've been hearing about the car wash and maybe adding that to the market. The question about the gas stations, I guess, okay, this is really, I'm trying to envision how I would use that if I lived in that area. Would I stop in before I get on the 126 heading to downtown Ventura or heading east to Santa Clarita? Would I get gas there or would people get off the freeway to use it? And I'm more interested in serving the residents than I am attracting people to get off the So I'm not quite sure what your vision is because I think it's two different audiences. So is there, do you see the people using this development, people, serving the people driving on the freeway more so than serving the residents around that location?
Deputy Mayor, is this a question for staff or for the applicant?
For the applicant, I think.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Councilman Halter, this is more intended for the commuter in the, on Wells Road. We don't anticipate any major draw from the freeway because of visibility and we're not advertising it. It's more for the local and also traffic that's on Wells. That's 90% of the.
Okay, thank you. And then while you're still there, what's the connectivity light throughout that neighborhood to get to this location? Is there sidewalks that lead people to it?
If you can look at the site plan, the site plan, the entire site, first of all, Los Angeles, Wells and Darling, it's all sidewalk connected and we have internal sidewalks all the way from Los Angeles Avenue, all the way through to each of the pads and each of the parcels. Yeah, sidewalks and also the sidewalks are separated by landscaping from, you know, the parking and what have you, as you can see, yeah.
Okay. I think those are my main questions. I'll save my deliberations for a little bit.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I have Kristen Kessler or Janice Wilks come? Either or, or both. Come on down. I just want to pick your brain a little bit. I apologize for putting you on the spot. Either or, both, I mean, support each other. Hold hands if you want. So I'm just curious, why wouldn't this grocery store work for this community?
Because it's a glorified Kmart, basically. Have you been down telephone recently?
I have.
Okay, so we've got liquor store after liquor store after liquor store. They have fresh fruit. They have a lot of alcohol, too. Is there any alcohol that's going to be sold at this store?
Just focus on.
Of course there is. We don't need it. And the notion that this is going to be used by the community for walking, that was what was shot down at the planning commission meeting. I have a beautiful area where I live, right across from Wells, I walk daily. Can I see myself walking across Wells to go to this little piece of property to walk? Nobody.
Okay.
Not going to happen.
Okay, so in regards to the specific plan where it has a focus on a parking lot, that would be better than this option?
I'm sorry, what was that?
So in the specific plan, there's a, I'm sorry, Michael, if we can go to slide 16? There's more focus on a parking lot. Is that what the community would be looking for? No.
No. What is the parking lot for? I mean, okay, the term that keeps coming up is auto-centric. That's all this is. The comment from this gentleman that they're not expecting cars to come here from the 126 is ridiculous. That is the whole reason why the gas stations are going to be there. That is the only reason. Everything else was flowers. The apartments were added to appease us, okay? I don't want it. They're building all over the place there. We don't need low income housing across the street from million dollar homes, okay?
Okay.
That may not have gone over well, but I think people will tend to agree with that. Shea Homes is still in the process of building. We have a lot of homes going up in the neighborhood and there's one not too far from us that hasn't even started yet. So 49 unit apartment building? What's that for?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. That's all my questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then just, just for my clarification, can I ask a question when we closed the public hearing to you? Okay, I can. So I'll wait for my question for the city attorney later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I remembered my question. Thank you for bringing up the solar portion of it. At one point, there had been discussion or ideas of a community center at this location. Is that still something? And I'm looking at the developer saying yes.
We're planning on approximately 750 to 1,000 square feet in the 49 apartment unit complex to provide a community room, which would multi-function, you know, students can come in, use the internet, a couple of computers in there just in case they want to access it, community meetings, what have you, that will be part of the project.
Okay, so that will be part. Okay, thank you. And then this is to staff. I just want to make sure, tonight, are we approving the project or are we approving them to move forward to do the next step?
So you would be, so as of right now, staff's recommendation is to deny the project as presented. If council agreed with that, then you would be the final decision maker and they would go back to step one. Should the project be supported in some capacity or with some tweaks, you would be recommending to reject staff's denial?
Okay.
With the support for the project to move forward through the application process with A, B, C, or what have you. So for example, what I'm, what I've heard thus far, and I'm just trying to make note because I know the verbiage is kind of clunky. So recommendation to reject staff's recommendation to deny the project as presented with support for the project to move forward with application processing with the following refinements. Move the market building closer to the corner of the Wells and Darling intersection so it mirrors the orientation of other proposed buildings. Remove the car wash component to create a larger market of approximately 10,000 square feet. This gives the applicant a green light to move forward with environmental review, but then there still is a decision-making process ahead of them. You would be green lighting them, allowing to move forward with another investment through environmental review, but it would go to planning commission and it would come back to you for final approval once the analysis is done.
And it can still be rejected at that step of the process at planning commission or here on council?
That's correct.
And do we know approximately how long that process would take?
We've gotten an M and D estimate and I think the timeline was maybe six to, about six months?
Six months.
For the environmental review component and then staff packaging it for planning commission. The applicant will probably need some time to refine their plans based on additional feedback from council, but hopefully. But hopefully, you know, upon resubmital, meeting the objectives directed by council, we would recommence processing, go into environmental review, probably be at hearing before planning commission in about seven, eight months.
Thank you. Do I have any other questions?
Just another clarification, it would go to design review in concert while we're conducting environmental review. So it wouldn't be a linear, we do that in concert to help.
Okay.
Expedite the process.
Okay, that's helpful. If I don't see any final questions from council members, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and enter council deliberation at this time. Any council deliberations? Nobody. Well, I, I'll go ahead and, and start, I mean, I think, uh, hearing from the applicant, and again, going back to just in my head thinking there has to be a compromise, knowing that we're not approving the project today per se, and that the applicant has, uh, agreed to change the orientation, forego a car wash, increase the market, consider a community center, and also the Amazon lockers idea. You know, for me, I, when I answered your question earlier, Councilmember Schumacher, um, yes, there has been a lot of, uh, vocal residents who are like, we don't want another gas station, we don't want, um, you know, fast food. By the same token, there has been also a few, um, folks who have said, you know, are we ever going to get anything in that parcel? Is it going to continue to be empty, um, for how long, and so on and so forth? So, I, you have all kinds of opinions, um, coming out of that. Uh, I think, um, for the most part, the, the concern is, uh, the neighborhood, um, the way it fits in the neighborhood, um, the electrification process of it, and I know that, um, there was a clarification that the gas station pumps could then be switched to electric vehicle charge stations should we move in that direction. And again, I, I think, for me, when I hear the outcry of the environmental concerns, then I want to see that. I want to see the environmental report, which has not been done, right? So, um, that's kind of where my thoughts are right now, um, so I just wanted to share that. Deputy Mayor Halter?
I'll go ahead and try, um, you know, um, I do like seeing, uh, the additional housing. Uh, that's, to me, is a real plus, because we desperately need it. I think the design is interesting, so it has architectural interest to it. So I thought that was a real plus, because I can't say that about everything that's gone up in the last few years. I don't think, I kind of made a comment about, um, uh, you know, there's, there's many different types of fast food. But I kind of see restaurant space that could be very useful in that neighborhood. That, I don't know how necessary it has to be, uh, drive-through, just because you get qualified to do drive-through. Because I do see a lot of auto-centric, and that's the word of the night, um, between the drive-through, between the car wash, between the gas stations. I, I, I think that, uh, when I see whether it's Friselli's or whether it's Porto or something like that, something that could be very useful and something, uh, brings some, uh, some, something to the east side that you may only find in downtown or in midtown, you know? I think that could be a real plus, because a lot of us in Ventura, we have, we have a lot of the same values, regardless of what neighborhood we live in. I think, um, the gas station throws me off a bit, because, um, it just feels like so yesterday to me. I mean, that was the thing, when I see the project, I, I think of how we always used to develop things, and I want to see something better. And so I see, uh, the apartments, I see probably giving up the car wash, what you lose by giving up the car wash are people that I think might be, if it is this type of car wash, where people sit there and wait for their car, they might go shopping, they might go get something to eat while they're waiting there. That would add life and vitality to that, that development. So you might give that up by getting rid of the car wash, but that is getting rid of one more thing that is serving the automobile really more than anything. And, um, uh, the gas station, um, I would like it better without it, but, um, I, and then I look at where it's positioned on Wells Road, and I, I believe most of the traffic really comes from, uh, the west going east, or people on 126 are going, um, from the east on 126 going west. And it feels like it's on the wrong side of the road for it to attract people to get off the road to use it. So therefore, it must be attracting people in that neighborhood to get gas before they get on the freeway. I, um, I would agree that it's very difficult to cross Wells Road. I think that would be something that would have to be changed in a way to make things safe, if we're really going to activate that road as, uh, a main through affair through a neighborhood. Let's see, those are some of my thoughts right now, I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Duran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, you know, I, I'm looking at this project, and it brings, uh, housing, it brings services, it brings economic, uh, activation on a parcel that's been, it's been vacant for way, way too long. Uh, when we talk about infill development, walkability, and reducing, um, vehicle trips, th- this is what, this is it. But, I mean, 49 new apartments, awesome, including affordable units, awesome. And it offers nearby services like a market, car wash, gas, well, car wash probably not, but grocery store, gas, food, all which the community travels west to access. They all leave to go get that already, this project doesn't create more traffic, I think it localizes it, I think it really brings everybody to the same place. I, I understand the concerns about, um, auto-oriented design, but I think that we have to recognize the reality of how people live today, today, in today's world. They drive, they need gas, they need groceries, they need a place to pick up dinner after work. This project provides that all in one spot, right in that area, while also bringing jobs, tax revenue, increased activity to a critical intersection at Wells and, and Darling. So, I mean, we've got a housing crisis today, no doubt about that, this will help a little bit. Um, we have a need for neighborhood-serving retail, and we have an opportunity to revitalize East Ventura in a way that reflects, uh, the current community needs, but is this project perfect? No, but it's a strong, smart step forward. Let's not send another developer away, let's work with them, let's get shovels in the ground, let's deliver housing, jobs, and services to people of Saticoy, because they deserve it just as much as any other neighborhood in Ventura. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McReynolds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What I'd like to do is challenge the, uh, developer. We, we want to do 21st century projects, and, and, you know, and I agree the gas station is, you know, a 20th century project, and I, I understand that. But if you could do more with the EV charging. Saticoy is a economically disadvantaged community that we're going to be talking about when we adopt the general plan in October. And I think if there was more availability for EV charging for the neighborhood to, to use, that would be a positive on it. So I, I think there's a real opportunity there, uh, for that, uh, on it, and then, uh, so that's, you know, really, I, I just really want to see the EV charging, again, as it goes through this process, if it moves forward. I realize you're not Sinclair Gas, you're an entirely different operator, but this council has real concerns about what we're dealing with in regards to the Sinclair Gas leak, and, uh, we, we don't want to see a repeat of that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campos.
I, um, I appreciate very much that the developer is focusing on all-electric and solar and heat pump technology, and making an effort in those buildings to step up into the 21st century. I too would like to not see the gas station, if there were ways to increase greatly the charging stations. There's many programs for low-income people to obtain electric vehicles in the state of California, many have already done so. So maybe the need for the gas on this property isn't as great. I also heard earlier mention of community center, and I appreciate you, Mayor, asking for clarity on it. Really, that, that portion of Saticoy is, uh, community, and it's a, a walkable neighborhood right now. It needs this project to come through. But it also could use a community center that isn't just a community room in a building, but a center for everybody in the neighborhood to gather. So if there's any way to expand on that somewhere on this property, that would 100% influence votes from me along the way. We really need gathering places for our communities. That's why the idea of a walkable community emerged 20 and 30 years ago. So I would like to see that if we accept this.
Thank you, Councilmember Schumacher, followed by Councilmember Mangone.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you to the staff, I think this is such a really great opportunity for us to be able to actually deliberate on something where we're not handcuffed to the mandates from the state, and I really appreciate that we're, we're really going deep in this discussion, because this is a hard one. I mean, on one hand, we have affordable housing, as Councilmember Duran mentioned. We have a grocery store with fresh meat and, and fresh food, and I don't necessarily kind of, um, you know, categorize it as a liquor store. I think there's a lot of benefits here in regards to, um, you know, providing some accesses to new services, and then the potential for having EV stations, um, and then, you know, the mayor also mentioned that the, um, there would be a recommendation to, and I think there's some level of agreement on, uh, no car wash. But again, it's not really binding, right? It's, it's one of those things that, you know, they can agree to, but not necessarily will do, hopefully they will. And then on the other side, we have the planning commissioners that unanimously voted this down. And I just have to pay attention to that, and also, uh, we have our director, community director, um, development director, who also is asking us to, uh, vote this down as well, because of the policies that we had, and, um, you know, kind of, uh, established in the past. And then, you know, uh, the community members really don't want this gas station, nor do they want the car wash. So it's like this really enormous decision here that we, um, we are looking at, but I think with, um, I'm not, I'm not anywhere in any place just yet, I, I want to hear more from my colleagues. I think with Councilmember McReynolds's point, that this, uh, specific plan is 30 years old? 30 years old, 1996? I mean, Jesus Christ, then there's, there's so much that's gone out, that's developed in the past 30 years, right? And so I also don't want it to look like a parking lot as well, because that obviously doesn't help with this people-oriented focus that, that, um, the community is looking for. So there is just this weird, like, not weird, there is this really big, um, kind of push and pull, where I feel like I, I'm in one place, and then I also, uh, feel like I'm in a, in another, and I'm, I'm still open to listening to my colleagues to see, what else, uh, do we have to discuss on?
Thank you, Councilmember Mangone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I agree with my colleagues, I think, um, as is, I would, I think right now I'd probably move to deny this project also. So I appreciate the fact that the applicants are willing to kind of work with the council, and this is essentially preliminary. They're really, seems like they're really open to, to kind of our options. I think, when it comes to the grocer, I've been hearing, I grew up in Ventura, the, the east end's always needed more grocers. Uh, this is not the right spot for a grocer, I think we can all agree that. I think one big thing that the community on the east end needs to consider, that density is a huge factor in, in grocers considering a spot. That's why in LA you see, uh, grocers with subterranean, San Diego comes to mind, Pacific Beach I know has a Vons that has subterranean. Um, that's not probably ever going to happen in Ventura. I think, even though we all want a grocer there, it's just not the reality of it, and if we build it, it doesn't mean they're going to come. So I think, um, I think I, I also wish there was kind of some more options that would better serve the community and, on the site. I think, um, I think the, I, I do appreciate the circulation improvements that they've done to the site, but the fact of the matter is, without a car wash and a couple of drive-throughs, I don't think they would be necessary, so. Though I appreciate it, um, I think it, that would be mandatory, considering what their, what the proposal is here as is. I appreciate the, the additional housing that they've met, the inclusionary housing, 15%, that's awesome. I too would like to see a move away from drive-throughs, I mean, I just mentioned that, and we were talking about the general plan. But I think also the reality is, there's, these developers don't have cash on hand to fund these projects, right? So there's funding issues there, um, lenders, they want to see the best use of a project, and they're not going to just loan a developer money to build anything that the community wants. Um, that's just the reality of what you have here. So I, I, I also understand that the, the applicants are kind of, their hands are tied a little bit too with funding issues. A third, gas station, really, the gas station and car wash are the biggest issue for me. I don't think we need another gas station, a car wash was just approved up the street. We certainly don't need another car wash on the Wells Avenue corridor. But again, I, I appreciate the applicants willing to, to kind of, uh, consider this site without a car wash. And, um, what else? And the market, I think, again, I, I think 4,000 square feet is way too small of a market for this site, especially to service a community that's expanding, it's growing, there's more housing being built. This public speaker mentioned the Shea Homes development up the street's not even completely built yet. And I would like to see a market that's built there be as successful as possible. I mean, that's it too, right, you build a market, I appreciate the fact that it's going to be, uh, local operators, you guys plan to operate the, the markets, not going to be a 7-Eleven. But, yeah, that's, going back to what my council, or, sorry, my colleague, Councilmember Schumacher, mentioned, I too am, keep thinking about, the community development director and also the planning commission, um, moving to deny this project. Uh, I think for all the reasons that most of us are concerned about, so I'm a little bit torn on this one too.
Thank you, Councilmember McReynolds.
I just wanted to address two comments, in, in regards to the planning commission, uh, you are correct, they, they did deny it. Uh, but they don't have the authority we do to, to start a negotiation, you know, on it, they have to look at the project that's before them. So, you know, we do have more authority to, to act within that. And then regarding the drive-throughs, I agree, I'm not a fan, and, you know, to your comment you made regarding, you know, I, I try to avoid them at all costs, uh, in, in general, I don't feel like it's a healthy opportunity. But at the same time, I, I think we have to take a larger picture, not about drive-throughs today, about drive-throughs in 30 years from now, you know? And, you know, I fully believe that I'm going to tell my car to go pick something up for me, and it's going to go get it, it's going to go through the drive-through, they're going to put it in my car, and it's going to drive home without me ever going in there. So I think we have to take a long view, in 1996, I think, as Councilmember Schumacher referenced, there was no Amazon, there was no iPhone, there was no, you know, it's, it's, you know, we, we have to take the long view, uh, on it, and, uh, I'm not saying, maybe we don't do drive-throughs anymore, I, I'm not, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I'm just saying, I think we've got to be able to, to keep that, that open, and I think, you know, now when I go to, you know, and, well, most grocery stores, there's eight places reserved where they walk out and put your groceries in your car, you know, I just, you know, so that, it, it's all changing, and, you know, I just, I think the challenge to us is how do we keep a, a, a 30-year view, you know, it, it is challenging, you know, so. I, I, in 1996, I couldn't have told you that there was going to be such thing as an iPhone, and, you know, that I could order something on Amazon, and it's there within a couple hours of my house, so, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments, um, and I, I think I just wanted to... And I think I just wanted to touch on, oh, staff?
I just wanted to also offer that there are two alternatives within the council report. If we could maybe show on the screen, as it sounds like, it seems like we're stepping away from staff's recommendation to deny the project altogether. But we do have these two alternatives as well. And number two is a more eloquent way of what I was trying to formulate earlier that allows the project to move forward with refinements or proceed to move forward with the project as presented. Thank you. Just wanted to offer that for further discussion.
I appreciate that. And I think that's where I was going to head because, again, hearing from your comments earlier, we're not approving the project as is. Should we say, let's move forward? It's still, it would give permission, if you will, to move to the next step. And so I just want to make that clear, like, we're not approving. If this moves forward, we're not approving the project. And I think that there's still a lot of unanswered questions when it comes to the environment, the impact. And for that, that's why we have an EIR. But if it hasn't even been gone, or it hasn't even gone through that process, then we're just speculating a lot of what we've talked about tonight. So for me, it would be important to have an official environmental report to tell us what the impact would be instead of us just speculating. So that's kind of, that's where I'm at, and I was looking at the alternatives. And again, it sounds like the developers are willing to work with some of the directions that we've given tonight. And if that can happen, then I think number two would be fitting. And a motion is required, so I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion, or I'll make the motion, and I would need a second, but that's where I'm at.
And as part of number two, we would look for, you know, specific items per your direction. That can be very clear for the record.
Sure.
So what I heard earlier is that, and I'm in agreement, but what I heard earlier is that we were going to get rid of the car wash, expand the grocery store to 10,000 feet, and we're going to move, was it the grocery store to the front?
Yes.
Those were the two main things that I heard. And I know we talked a lot about other things, maybe changing other things. But is there anything else that you thought you wanted? Because I thought those were the two main things. And then maybe move forward with those two, unless there's something else.
I think increasing the EV charging capacity was a big, a big point being made also.
And currently, the, can I ask a question, a clarifying question? In regards to the EV chargers, are they the standard or fast chargers? Like, there's a difference, so just wanted to clarify that. Do we know? Can he come up and answer that or no?
We will need to ask the applicant team.
I'm sorry?
We would need to ask the applicant team.
Okay.
The mayor could reopen the public.
I'd have to reopen the public hearing. So if you can come up and answer that question. Sorry.
The eight units that we were proposing in front of the market, those are going to be the super-fast chargers. Then the rest, for example, like the one Mr. McReynolds indicated to add, those will be the Level 1. Those, eight will be Level 3, which is superchargers. In the apartments also, they have Level 1. And throughout the site, we'll have additional Level 1s, which we'll show on the plan when we come back.
Thank you.
So if that's it, I'll make a motion to, I guess.
I'll have to close the public hearing now, right? Okay, so I'm closing the public hearing. No other questions, sorry.
Did you close the public hearing?
I closed the public hearing now.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to deny staff's recommendation. I think we're going to go with, is it with number two to, with revision? So we're talking about 10,000-foot market as well as the removal of the car wash and moving the, moving the market up towards the street as well as adding more EV units. That would be the motion.
Second.
I'll second. She's second. Councilmember Campos seconded, thank you. And before we move for a vote, Councilmember Mangone, your name still? Nope, okay. Any comments after the motion? Deputy Mayor?
I just want to throw out there that, okay, I'll admit it, I know fast food pretty well, okay? And I'm embarrassed to say that. But, but I got to tell you, what's different is so many of them that we have across our city are either closing like Burger King just did on the avenue. There's a few on Thompson that I just don't see people using. I don't know the business, I just know that I've been there, okay? And so I would encourage us looking at maybe something that the businesses, that something that can be a win-win-win, again, that is a nicer something other than drive-through. Because I think, you know, it's not even about the fossil fuels and the burning that, because quite frankly, in a few years, we're going to be electric. So you're going to have cars sitting, electric cars sitting, waiting for the food to be delivered to them. So, but if we can encourage and look at a business model that can be even better for everybody that doesn't include just the unhealthy fast food that I tend to eat, okay?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McReynolds?
I wanted to reflect on something that Councilmember Campos always likes to remind us in regards to the Chumash. And actually, Saticoy is a Chumash word. I'm not going to pretend to say it in Chumash, but my understanding, it means it shelters from the wind.
Yes, correct.
And this has been a, this location, maybe not this exact, what we're talking about, has been a Chumash village for a very long time. And so this is, you know, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, that that has been part of this history, you know, for a long time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that and seeing no other comments, there is a motion and a second. Mr. City Clerk, can we do a vote, please?
Okay, you can go ahead and enter your vote now on the motion. Waiting for one more vote to be entered. All votes have now been entered. Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who is here for this item tonight. We are going to go ahead and take a break and come back at 8:35. It's 8:16 right now, so that gives you 20 minutes? Okay, we'll be back at 8:35. Thank you.
Good evening again. Thank you all for being here still. We will move on to item number seven, which is one of our formal items, the 2050 General Plan Draft Environmental Impact Report, Comments, Review and Noise Element Release. And there will be a staff presentation for this whenever we have our staff ready to go.
Hello.
Turn it over to you.
Hello. Thank you. Good evening, Council. For the record, Maru Haclensei, Assistant Community Development Director. With me is Lexi Journey from Rincon Consulting. She has been helping on the EIR, Draft Environmental Impact Report, for the general plan online. We have Matt Maddox, Principal with also Rincon Consulting. We have our traffic consultant, Deepak Kushik from e-Terris. And we also have Hannah Park with BBK Council, online to help with any questions that we may have. And this is, again, a real exciting moment for us with the general plan. We just kicked off our EIR review. It's subject to a 45-day review period, just put online yesterday. So this is an informational hearing for you and the public, and kind of an executive summary of the environmental impact report. So I will go ahead and just get started. So the agenda in this presentation, we're going to go over California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, and the environmental review process, milestones within SEQA, environmental analysis, the structure of the document, our draft summary findings and alternatives. Also announcing our noise element that was just released as well yesterday. That is our final chapter of our general plan, state-required chapter. And then how to submit public comment, announcements, and next steps. So SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, applies to projects that require discretionary approval from a state or local agency. In this case, we're doing what's called a programmatic EIR to evaluate the environmental impacts on a programmatic level of the general plan pursuant to SEQA. This is also part of the public disclosure and input process. The draft environmental document looks to minimize, reduce, or avoid environmental impacts of a worst-case scenario. And with that includes mitigation measures to mitigate or reduce those impacts. So this is the process of the SEQA and environmental review document. We had a notice of preparation that was issued in May of last year. We drafted our environmental impact report, published it just yesterday. Again, the 45-day public comment period, after which we take those comments, produce a final document, and then we take it before Planning Commission and then City Council as part of the general plan package. So during the first two stages, we got input on the draft EIR, and now we're in the comment phase of the draft document. So those milestones, May 1st is when we published our notice of preparation. We had a scoping meeting on the 20th. The review period closed that month, the end of May. We had a draft issued yesterday. Public review will close on August 14 at 5:00 p.m. And then we anticipate completing or having a final EIR document in September. So SEQA requires an environmental document to look at a variety and numerous topics as seen on the screen. Everything from ag to recreation, noise, air quality, utilities, hydrology, et cetera. So the EIR includes an introduction and summary with a project description, and then has setting impacts and mitigation for each of those topic areas. So within that topic area, as noted on the preview screen, they have an environmental setting, potential impacts if applicable, and mitigation measures where potential significant impacts have been identified. Again, then we have alternatives at the end of the EIR and potential other impacts. Again, the EIR is a program EIR, meaning it looks to a series of connected actions that will govern future activities and decisions rather than a specific development project or property. So future development projects will be subject to their own environmental review. And in some cases, especially the discretionary ones, will have their own environmental document that would tear off of this. So in our draft document, we've identified 11 environmental factors with none or less than significant impacts as they're drafted. These include the topics on the screen from aesthetics, ag, energy hazards, hydrology, land use and planning, population and housing, public services, transportation, utilities and service systems, and wildlife. The EIR has identified six environmental factors that have less than significant impacts with mitigation measures incorporated. These are in the categories of air quality, biological resources, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and tribal cultural resources. So these impacts have proposed mitigation measures and/or suggested policies that would bring that impact to a less than significant level. The 15 mitigation measures contained within the draft EIR focus on these topics of air quality, biology or biological resources, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and tribal cultural resources. For air quality, we're looking at requiring operational health risk assessments. For biology, we have certain mitigation measures, including special species plant monitoring, avoidance of habitat, or sorry, habitat restoration plan, looking at special status species, habitat assessments, and protocol surveys, pre-construction bumblebee surveys, avoidance and minimization measures. We're looking at protection of paleontological resources within geology and soils by way of monitoring during construction, seeking electric-only development to the extent feasible to help reduce GHG emissions, requiring construction noise analysis and mitigations, a noise disturbance coordinator, and a construction vibration control plan with certain projects, and retention of a qualified professional for infill discovery consultation of potential tribal cultural resources. So there are four significant and unavoidable impacts within the draft EIR. These involve air quality, cultural resources, and noise. Air quality impact AQ2 is in regards to development or construction that would generate construction and operational emissions, and such emissions may result in impacts to local air quality. Construction is going to happen. We try to mitigate it to the best that we can. But it is an unavoidable impact by way of just development. Cultural resources, these two talk about, development facilitated by a project could have potential to cause adverse changes to significant cultural or historical resources or archaeological resources. So with development, you have grading, you have earthwork, you may uncover historical resources or other cultural or archaeological resources. That would be a quote-unquote unavoidable impact. But with that, we offer policies to help lessen that impact by way of having onsite consultation, bringing in a cultural monitor, or designated ethnographic representative to assess the resource. Noise, again, connected back with the impact of construction. Construction's going to generate noise. There's going to be certain activities that introduce new noise sources and operational noise by way of new projects. That is an unavoidable impact. We try and mitigate that with sound attenuation requirements during construction or other elements like sound walls and barriers once a project is constructed and completed. So all significant and unavoidable impacts are also cumulative, significant, and unavoidable. So with four significant and unavoidable impacts, council will eventually be required to adopt a statement of overriding considerations. And this is a statement, that's a written document that outlines that these benefits or that the project, the benefits are larger, and explain why and justify approving the project despite the potential and unavoidable impacts. Each EIR is required to have alternatives to allow for meaningful comparison between what the project is, in this case, the general plan, to look at potential environmental impacts and those other feasible options. In this case, all the alternatives either propose expansion onto SOAR property or open space and ag property, or arranging densities in certain areas which would prevent us from meeting arena number. So none of these are supported by staff. We also wanted to announce our noise element. This describes noise conditions in the city and provides goals, policies, and implementation actions similar to the other elements that we've had before you through our study sessions. We include noise standards, current and projected noise levels, key issues and opportunities, and goals and policies. Implementation actions include collaboration with industrial and ag property owners to find solutions to help reduce noise impacts, coordination with the fairgrounds for potential long-term strategies to reduce noise, a noise ordinance update, and developing a noise complaint process. So how to submit public comment, announcements, and next steps. So our EIR and public comment opportunities is our EIR is online at planventura.com/environmentalimpactreport. We have our final GPAC meeting to discuss the EIR on Tuesday, July 15. Our Planning Commission is hosting a special meeting and open house on Monday, July 21. The EIR meeting for the GPAC on Tuesday, July 15 is at 6:00 p.m. The Planning Commission meeting will be at 5:30. And because we have a 45-day comment period with the EIR, we wanted to extend the general plan public comment period so there was no confusion with what the deadline is. So August 14 for everything involving the general plan and the EIR for public comment, which can be submitted online or via email at plansventura@cityofentura.ca.gov. We also have an anuncio público, and we have a dedicated Spanish resource page on our website. We have translated our objectives and policies of the entire general plan by a certified translator. We have past presentations, videos that have been done since the beginning, as well as a fact sheet of what the general plan is. So that is on our homepage, a hyperlink, and you can see those materials there. And comments on that could be emailed to the same email address, planventura@cityofentura.ca.gov, with the deadline of August 14. So next steps in the process, we are here at the second little box, July 1. Then we have our GPAC EIR meeting, July 15. Planning Commission EIR open house on July 21. Our deadline of August 14, internal public comment review, and then Planning Commission adoption hearing September 24, and City Council adoption hearing on October 21. So this concludes my presentation. Ms. Journey, as well as our consultants are online with any questions. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, staff. Do I have any questions? Councilmember Campos?
I don't have a question. I really wanted to thank the staff for putting this all in Spanish in its entirety and making sure that it functions. I really appreciate you doing that for my community.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I will go ahead and recognize public comments. Mr. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Mayor. No public comment cards submitted for item seven.
Okay. Back to council for deliberation. And a motion is required if there's a change, but it's also receive and file, correct? So if we want to receive and file?
...scenario, and with that includes mitigation measures to mitigate or reduce those impacts. So this is the process of the SEQA, an environmental review document. We had a notice of preparation that was issued in May of last year. Uh, we drafted our environmental impact report, published it just yesterday. Again, the forty-five day public comment period, after which we take those comments, produce a final document, and then we take it before Planning Commission and then City Council as part of the general plan package. So during the first two stages, we got input on the draft EIR, and now we're in the comment phase of the draft document. So those milestones, May first is when we published our notice of preparation. We had a scope meeting, a scoping meeting on the twentieth. The review period closed that month, the end of the, end of May. We had a draft issued yesterday. Public review will close on August fourteenth at five P M. And then we anticipate completing of, or having a final EIR document in September. So, uh, SEQA requires an environmental document to look at a variety and numerous topics as seen on the screen. Everything from ag to recreation, noise, air quality, utilities, hydrology, et cetera. So the EIR includes an introduction and summary with a project description, and then has setting, impacts, and mitigation for each of those topic areas. So within that topic area, as noted on the preview screen, they have an environmental setting, potential impacts if applicable, and mitigation measures where potential significant impacts have been identified. Again, then we have alternatives at the end of the EIR and potential other impacts. Again, the EIR is a program EIR, meaning it looks to a series of connected actions that will govern future activities and decisions, rather than a specific development project or property. So, future development projects will be subject to their own environmental review, and in mo, in some cases, especially the discretionary ones, will have their own environmental document that would tier off of this. So, in our draft document, we've identified eleven environmental factors with none or less than significant impacts as they're drafted. These include the topics on the screen from aesthetics, ag, energy hazards, hydrology, land use and planning, population and housing, public services, transportation, utilities and service systems, and wildlife. The EIR has identified six environmental factors that have less than significant impacts with mitigation measures incorporated. These are in the categories of air quality, biological resources, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and tribal cultural resources. So these impacts have proposed mitigation measures and/or suggested policies that would bring that impact to a less than significant level. The fifteen mitigation measures contained within the draft EIR focus on these topics of air quality, biology, or biological resources, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, noise, and tribal cultural resources. For air quality, we're looking at requiring operational health risk assessments. For biology, we have certain mitigation measures, including special species plant monitoring, um, avoidance of habitat, or, sorry, habitat restoration plan, looking at special status species habitat assessments and protocol surveys, pre-construc, pre-construction, uh, bumblebee surveys, avoidance and minimization measures. We're looking at protection of paleontological resources within geology and soils by way of monitoring during construction, seeking electric-only development to the extent feasible to help reduce G H G emissions, requiring construction noise analysis and mitigations, a noise disturbance coordinator, and a construction vibration control plan with certain projects, and retention of a qualified professional for infill discovery consultation of potential tribal cultural resources. So there are four significant and unavoidable impacts within the draft EIR. These involve air quality, cultural resources, and noise. Air quality impact A Q two is in regards to development or construction that would generate construction and operational emissions, and such emissions may result in impacts to local air quality. Construction is going to happen. We try to mitigate it to the best that we can, um, but it is an unavoidable impact by way of just development. Cultural resources, these two talk about development facilitated by a project could have potential to cause adverse changes to significant cultural or historical resources or archaeological resources. So with development, you have grading, you have earthwork. You may uncover historical resources or other cultural or archaeological resources. That would be a quote-unquote unavoidable impact, but with that, we offer policies to help lessen that impact by way of having onsite consultation, bringing in a cultural monitor, or designated ethnographic representative, um, to assess the resource. Noise, again, connected back with the impact of construction. Construction's gonna generate noise. There's gonna be, um, uh, certain activities introduce new noise sources and operational noise by way of new projects. That is an unavoidable impact. We try and mitigate that with sound attenuation requirements during construction or other elements like sound walls and barriers once a project is constructed and completed. So all significant and unavoidable impacts are also cumulative, significant, and unavoidable. So with four significant and unavoidable impacts, council will eventually be required to adopt a statement of overriding considerations. And this is a statement, that's a written document that outlines that these benefits, uh, and, or that the project, uh, the benefits are larger, and explain why and justify approving the project despite the potential and unavoidable impacts. Each EIR is required to have alternatives, um, to allow for meaningful comparison between what the project is, in this case, the, the general plan, to look at potential environmental impacts and those other feasible options. In this case, all the alternatives either propose expansion onto SOAR property or open space and ag property, or arranging densities in certain areas which would prevent us from meeting arena number, so neither, or so none of these are supported by staff. We also wanted to announce our noise element. This describes noise conditions in the city and provides goals, policies, and implementation actions similar to the other elements that we've had before you through our study sessions. We include noise standards, current and projected noise levels, key issues and opportunities, and goals and policies. Implementation actions include collaboration with industrial and ag property owners to find solutions to help reduce noise impacts, coordination with the fairgrounds for potential long-term strategies to reduce noise, a noise ordinance update, and developing a noise complaint process. So how to submit public comment, announcements, and next steps. So our EIR and public comment opportunities is, our EIR is on, online at planventura.com forward slash environmental impact report. We have our final G-PAC meeting to discuss the EIR on Tuesday, July fifteenth. Our Planning Commission is hosting a special meeting and open house on Monday, July twenty-first. The EIR meeting, uh, for the G-PAC on Tuesday, July fifteenth is at six P M. The Planning Commission meeting will be at five thirty. And because we have a forty-five day comment period with the EIR, we wanted to extend the general plan public comment period, so there was no confusion with what the deadline is. So, August fourteenth for everything involving the general plan and the EIR for public comment, which can be submitted online or via email at plansventura@cityofventura.ca.gov. We also have an anuncio público, and we have a dedicated Spanish resource page on our website. We have translated our objectives and policies of the entire general plan by a certified translator. We have, uh, past presentations, videos, uh, that have been done since the beginning, um, as well as a fact sheet of what the general plan is. So that is on our homepage, a hyperlink, and you can see those materials there. And comments on that could be emailed to the same email address, planventura@cityofventura.ca.gov, with the deadline of August fourteenth. So next steps in the process, we are here at the second, uh, little box, July first. Then we have our G-PAC EIR meeting, July fifteenth, Planning Commission EIR open house on July twenty-first, our deadline for, of August fourteenth, internal public comment review, and then Planning Commission adoption hearing September twenty-fourth, and City Council adoption hearing on October twenty-first. So this concludes my presentation. Ms. Journey, as well as our consultants are in line with any questions, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, staff. Do I have any questions? Councilmember Campos?
I don't have a question. I really wanted to thank the staff for putting this all in Spanish in its entirety and making sure that it functions. I really appreciate you doing that for my community.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I will go ahead and, um, recognize public comments. Mr. City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No public comment cards submitted for item seven.
Okay. Back to council for deliberation, and a motion is required if there's a change, but it's also receive and file, correct? So, um, if we wanna receive and file? So moved?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. So this is a receive and file.
We do have a motion and a second. Go ahead and enter your vote on item seven. All votes have now been entered. Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you to our consultants online who hung in there. Appreciate you.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, staff. Moving on to, um, formal item number eight, and that is the policy consideration of reforming the appointments process for boards, commissions, and committees. Um, that was reviewed by the Rules Committee on June second, twenty-twenty-five, and I will do a presentation as this is my, uh, policy consideration. So if we can bring up the slides. Um, and fir, first, I, I wanna just start off with, um, letting you all know that this, this is not an item that requires or will make any immediate changes, um, but it simply is, uh, an opportunity for us to have an open and thoughtful discussion about how we appoint members to our cities advisory boards, commissions, and committees. Um, so I'm hoping that this is a conversation, um, not a solidified plan of anything, um, but just conversation, cuz I wanna hear from you all on just my thoughts on this. So, any potential changes that would, um, be maybe recommended? Uh, they would still have to come back to council as a future amendment to our current municipal code. So again, um, not any immediate changes. And then, the other thing I wanted to make sure that was clear, because a lot of the, um, uh, public, uh, emails that I have received, as I'm sure many of you have received too, is, is that somehow this is directed specifically to a body that currently, um, is there within our boards and commissions. And this is certainly not a reflection of that, um, or our current volunteers. Um, if anything, I, I am deeply appreciative to our current boards and commission members who, um, are giving up their time, their effort to help us shape what Ventura policies, culture, and community will look like. And you are all a vital part of this. So this is, absolutely has nothing to do with any of our current board members or commissions. And so, um, I wanna speak from the personal experience of having been on the Appointments Recommendation Committee and that process, and how I saw firsthand, um, how hard, one, it was to schedule the interviews among all the different applicants that we would receive, um, how long it takes to fill some vacancies, which currently are still vacant. Um, we haven't been able to fill some. And then, difficulty with, um, balancing the transparency of the applicants. We deliberated in front of them, all of them. Um, we asked the same questions to all of them. The first speaker always had the hardest, um, challenge, I think, and then everyone else that followed, kinda just like, oh yeah, whatever that person said, right? And so, was that entirely fair? I don't know, but that's, that's our process. Um, and before joining the council, um, I, I served on the Planning Commission for a minute. I do remember that. Um, and at the time, uh, that model was, um, stable, responsive, inclusive, um, but I believe that there's also something to be learned, um, from it. And, you know, this proposal is about, let's, uh, modernize the process, hopefully, um, not undermine people and their efforts. And it's about ensuring that our appointment system truly reflects, uh, our district-based structure. Cuz that's the other part of it, that since twenty-eighteen, we have been, uh, districts. Uh, and yet, our boards and commissions, uh, with the exception of a few, don't re, don't reflect that. Um, so some have expressed concern that a district-based model could become politicized, and I understand that concern, um, but we haven't seen that with the Planning Commission. Um, and in fact, I think that body remains professional, productive, and balanced, um, even as council members have changed. Um, and lastly, I just wanna emphasize that this is also about including new people, um, ensuring that, um, it's equitable. And right now, we're seeing a low application number, uh, too many vacancies. We need to expand our outreach, um, reduce barriers, encourage broader and more diverse range of community members to serve. And so I'm hoping that this discussion will be the first step. Um, and so thank you, um, in advance for having an open mind and sharing the commitment to improve on how we continue to govern. And so one of my core goals was to bring this forward, to expand our city's volunteer pool. Um, you know, as I said, low application numbers and many unfilled seats. Um, I feel like, you know, do we need to remove, um, some barriers? Encourage broader participation? And something that I have, uh, you know, reflected on is that oftentimes, um, we, we do rely on staff to fill these seats. We, we don't take it upon ourselves as council members to say, um, we need to appoint or we need to fill these vacancies. And, and rather, we, we kinda just wait and see, oh, we don't have enough applicants? Okay, then, I guess we'll just continue waiting. And so, I'd like to change that, and I like to have a little bit more, um, of a proactive approach from us to ensure that, um, these boards and commissions have the va, the, the members that are needed, because I feel like that's part of our job too, um, to ensure that these are functioning boards and commissions. Um, and so with that, can you hit the next slide, please? So why this proposal and why now? Um, in our current, uh, recruitment, again, we have seen low application numbers um, across the many advisory groups. Uh, there are more than a dozen vacancies that are expiring, and we're seeing a challenge in filling them efficiently. Uh, council members have also voiced, uh, that they wanna have more direct engagement with their appointees. And again, this will be an opportunity to align all advisory groups to our district-based governance structure, which, um, we've been able to do with the Planning Commission and the Charter Review Committee. And so this isn't about removing anyone, it's about improving how we serve our community. Next slide, please. And so, the goals of this policy is aligned with district-based governance. Again, in twenty-eighteen, uh, we transitioned to district elections. Um, it promotes geographic equity, reflects our commitment to inclusive representation, and a streamlined accountable process supports deeper public involvement and a, and cleaner relationships between council and appointees. And we want to encourage, uh, more residents to step forward and participate in city, um, decision-making. Next slide, please. Some of the challenges with the current process that I, again, have personally seen is that with the AR, the Appointments Recommendation Committee process, um, again, became increasingly, uh, difficult to manage, especially in terms of scheduling and consistency. Last year, um, we had a two-day interview session with more than twenty-five hu, uh, applicants, more than twenty-five applicants, and, um, it just became, uh, just timewise, staff time, council member commitment to, uh, being in these meetings, interviewing our, um, applicants. Um, and this was just for one recruitment of, of one board. Um, so as you can see, it does take up, um, uh, an, a, a meaningful amount of time. Um, virtual interviews have also helped the process, um, but the core logistical challenge remains in that applicants have expressed discomfort with the public interview format and the perceived subjectivity of the process. And so, um, I'd like to see a more, uh, a model that is more accessible, um, more equitable, and more predictable, um, for, for this. Next slide, please. And so the proposal that's, um, that I'm, I'm putting out tonight is that, you know, we, we sunset the Appointments Recommendation Committee and move to a district-based nomination model for all seven-member advisory groups. Each council member would nominate one member with the final appointment made by the entire council. So, we would make appointments, it would still have to come back to council for a full approval. Um, and this change would not apply to our technical or regulatory bodies. Um, the A R C process could still remain in place for those bodies where specific qualifications are required. Um, and the City Clerk's Office would continue to manage the application intake, the outreach, and eligibility screening. And, um, and so, appointees would not be limited to having live in the council member's district. That was another concern that was brought up, that, you know, if we only appoint from our district, are we playing favoritism here? And it, members don't have to be from your district, but as long as a council member appoints them, then that's, uh, that's what, uh, would be fine. Um, and under this new model, appointees would serve at the pleasure of their nominating council member, creating clear lines for accountability. And overall, the approach, I think, simplifies, hopefully, and modernizes the process, increasing the transparency and giving each council member a direct role in shaping participation. Next, next slide, please. And so right now, just to, um, show you, the advisory groups under consideration are the ones that you see, Arts and Culture Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Parking Advisory Committee, and the Measure O. Um, and these are, uh, they show a total of twenty-eight volunteer positions that would be impacted. Um, and current appointments that are made through the A R C, um, a subcommittee process can be, again, the time and effort that it takes in scheduling and putting all this together. Importantly, to, to note is, when there is an unscheduled vacancy, uh, this can take up to four months to, with the current process, because we have to schedule meetings, we have to put a notice out there, we have to receive applications, and then we have to schedule interviews. Um, and it could take up to four months, because a thirty-day recruitment period, you know, all coordinating the interviews, and then bringing it back to council for a final agenda approval. Um, and so to implement the new structure, we would need to return to council with an ordinance change to the municipal code. Um, it's worth noting that the A R C was originally established back in two thousand and nine um, to standardize appointments, but in practice, um, it really has created a lot of inconsistencies, um, delays, logistical hurdles, um, that don't allow, that don't allow us to immediately fill a seat when needed. And, um, I, I think I can, for now, mention the harbor, for example, where they're looking for a, uh, of, of vacancy to fill. And if we were to go through this process, they need to fill that vacancy right away. In order for us to fill that, we'd have to thirty-day process, interviews, and so on and so forth. So, again, it's not something that we can quickly have, that we can have a quick turnaround for. Um, next slide, please. Um, and so, I was also, um, I asked staff to look at what are some of the other cities that are comparable to us? You know, what, what do they do? How do they, um, uh, work with their, uh, council to either nominate and with, you know, their, when, their commissions and boards, sorry. Um, and so across California, cities and counties, uh, they use a, a range of appointment methods. Some of them, like Berkeley, for example, have a mayor nomination with council confirmation. Um, and, uh, you know, you also have council at-large appointments. You have individual council members, uh, appointments by district. And then you also have a hybrid model, in where you can combine the elements of individual appointments. Um, and then you have a confirmation by the mayor, uh, to solidify those appointments. Um, and then there are some like, that have council subcommittee review, like our Appointments and Recommendations Committee. And so this table just shows, uh, many jurisdictions have moved to a district-based or hybrid model, where each elected representative plays a direct role in the, in the appointments. And, um, we even see in cities like Calabasas, um, doing that. Oxnard, our neighboring city, uses the hybrid model, where both individual council members and the mayor make appointments with council confirmation. Um, and that were to happen, again, using the, you know, an, an immediate vacancy, where it doesn't have to come to the entire council, but then the mayor can make a immediate appointment. Um, and then you can see other, uh, examples in where the nominations would come, or the appointments would come back to the entire council for a final nomination, and that could be used as well. Um, Santa Rosa follows a similar hybrid process, and again, ensuring accountability and collaboration. Um, and this process basically aligns with our industry standard best practices and reflects direction, um, that many district-based cities are moving towards right now. Um, and so by shifting away from a subcommittee, uh, we can then streamline appointments, increase, uh, district representation, and align more closely with our peer jurisdictions that are already using this model successfully. Next slide, please. And again, um, I wanna express my deep gratitude to our current, um, advisory board members. Uh, your dedication and, and service have been invaluable to our city. Uh, your work has helped make policy recommendations, supported important community initiatives. Um, and importantly, you know, appointments will remain open to all our eligible residents, regardless of which district they live in. And every current member of a seven-member advisory group would be invited to reapply by application. Um, and when I say reapply, uh, that doesn't mean that a sitting, uh, board member or commissioner has to physically reapply to be reconsidered for this position. Um, with those members, we would have their application on file already, and all we would need from them is to tell us, we're, I'm interested in still being in this board or commission. Um, and we would take that into consideration, and then any of us can appoint, uh, that individual, uh, as an example. So it's not that people will have to reapply for a position if they are sitting in the position right now. Um, and so I, I, my hope is that this proposal will create a pathway for continued service under a transparent, accountable, and district-aligned model. Um, and it's about simply modernizing the process while maintaining the continuity and honoring the people who have built these commissions into what they currently are. Next slide, please. Um, and here, I, I briefly wanted to walk through the bodies that are not included in this process, and I wanna explain why. Um, and I mentioned, um, the harbor. So, for example, the Port District, Ventura Port District, they have an appointment process. The appointment process for this board is actually governed by state law, um, in our city charter, which gives the mayor authority, um, with the council approval to appoint. Right, so that's an example of quick turnaround, we need an appointment, here you go. Um, the San Bueno Ventura Housing Authority is another one that, um, this would be a, this is a completely separate legal entity that is governed by its own board, so I would not fall into this. Um, our role is limited in making the appointments here, and by law, the Housing Authority must include at least two residents, um, who, who would be their members, which that places unique constraints, um, on its composition, so they wouldn't, um, be included in this. And then the Design Review Committee and the Historic Preservation Committee. These two bodies, um, have come under, uh, certain scrutiny in both the Matrix Report and the Grand Jury Report, um, which called for a comprehensive review of the city's development process. Um, and in light of that, these committees are under a broader policy review and are, would not be, um, considered under this right now, because also, uh, for those committees and boards, they'd have, it would be best served if there's like a phasing out of them, because they're currently going through, you know, significant changes that we don't wanna just close out and start over with those, um, to, uh, Design Review Committee and Historic Preservation Committee. So, um, wanted to point that out. And, um, next slide, please. Or actually, no, sorry, go back. Um, the mobile home, uh, rent review. Um, and so while this one in particular is one that caught my attention, because they haven't met in such a long time, um, they do continue to face recruit, recruiting, um, for this board. met in such a long time, they do continue to face recruit, recruiting for this board. Staff presented last year that any changes here would need to be part of a larger review of the entire rent review ordinance. And so I can't put them under this immediate change either. And then with the Water Commission, it's actively involved in council-directed review for Ventura Water Pure. Again, one of the commissions that I'd hate to kind of interrupt their process with this. And then finally, our Planning Commission that, which already operates under the district-based model. And so those are the ones that would not currently be under this new model. But I think as we move forward, in particular with the Design Review and the Historic Preservation, those could eventually be phased out, and then we can talk about the others as we move forward. And I think that is my next slide, that's the last slide. But again, just wanted to thank you in advance for being open to any of the ideas that I might have shared tonight. Again, this proposal is more about how we appoint our members, and how incredibly fortunate we are to have a strong foundation of civic participation in Ventura. And so tonight's, again, tonight's conversation is not about replacing anyone, it's not about looking at destroying what's been built, but it is simply about, can we have a conversation about how can we do better to fill the seats that remain vacant? How can we remove any barriers for those particular seats? And how can we open more doors for community involvement? And one of the comments that I've made also is that, again, we rely on staff to put out the notifications for vacancies, the recruitment, the application gathering, but yet, we are the ones out in the community, and we are the ones out engaging with people. And so when we know that there is a vacancy, and it's our responsibility to fill it, I think we will then feel more responsible to, to make the recruiting effort to, so that we can be able to appoint. And so for me, that's, those are sort of my ideas, these are, these are my intentions, and I hope that you will be open to having a good discussion about it. And so I just want to thank you for your time and your service, and for listening, and for your continued commitment to making Ventura better. So, with that, I will open it up for any council questions or remarks that you may have. Deputy Mayor Halter?
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just want to first thank you for doing so much research and bringing this topic forward, and seeing if there's a better way for us to move forwards, now that we're districts, and look at the pros and cons of that. So, thank you very much for all your hard work on that. It's a lot to digest, for me. And I think that, I'm looking at, when we talk about sunsetting the ARC committee, and then we look at those organizations, those committees or commissions that you're talking about, letting them phase out, I think, it seems like, you're right, I mean, it seems like that the ARC committee would have to be in place if we're, unless we had a strategic plan to let those other organizations, or other committees phase out. So, I don't see, I think that'd have to be actually fully looked at to see how to do that.
Yes, and thank you for asking that. So tonight's recommendation would be to direct staff to come back with more information on, in the report, we have one, two, three, A, B, C, D of recommendations to have staff look at and bring back. Because you're right, what is this going to look like? I don't know. But we'd have to have staff, and I don't know, Michael, if you want to add anything in terms of your perspective from city clerk, and how you guys have handled it. But tonight, it really is just to ask staff to dig a little bit deeper, come back, and then we could have another discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just add that for those five-member bodies, for example, council could consider one of those alternative appointment methods. So you could have, for example, a hybrid model where the five-member bodies are appointed in a different way than the seven-member bodies. For example, the city of Oxnard, as the mayor noted, has that hybrid model where some of their bodies, the mayor makes the recommendation to the appointments, and then council approves them. They're more technical bodies, the mayor makes the full recommendations, and then the council approves. So you could consider an alternative option, for example, for different bodies. And other jurisdictions do have alternative appointment methods, depending on the body itself.
So by doing that, we would not need the ARC, the Appointments Committee, then?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Halter. It would be dependent on council, and whether or not council would like staff to explore an alternative appointment method, like one that I noted, a mayor appointment with council approval, for example, or another method.
Okay, okay. The only thing I ask, and then let, leave it open for my colleagues to ask the questions and comments, is it seems to me that a lot of these commissions or committees are tied fairly directly with staff. And I think sometimes, either we don't give enough input to staff on what it is we need to help us do our job better, or perhaps it's not staff in position to really, really onboard the new commissioners or committee members in a way that they thoroughly understand exactly what their, what their mission is, and what they need to help us work on. So I think, I think there's another piece of the puzzle there, that, where we, there's more work between staff and the committees to figure out what their purpose are and what they need to work on, what the parameters are. Because it's really about helping council in the city make these decisions. Because we, no matter how many meetings we have, there's just so much information, so many things that we have to take care of. So we appreciate, need these volunteers on all these different committees and commissions to help guide us and give their input. And I just think sometimes there's input needed, more input from staff than what staff can rightly do in the time period that they have to do so, because they have so much work on their table.
Deputy Mayor, if I could just add to that point, thank you for those comments. Just as an aside, the clerk's office is also currently in the process of taking a look at our commissioners handbook, which was last updated in 2021. And depending on the council outcome of the item, the, staff would intend to update our manual simultaneously, which includes information around onboarding, for example. Just as another aside, the city clerk's office is also currently working with CAPS on our communications team to record two sets of videos, one video for a chair and vice chair training, and a separate video for a council onboarding. So I just provide that information as an aside, that that work is currently going on in the clerk's office as well.
Thank you, appreciate it. Everyone's doing a lot of good work, I think.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
Thank you, Mayor. On slide five, I noticed something that might be troublesome in some way. Under how it will work, the last bullet point says, "Appointees will serve at the pleasure of their nominating council member, and may be replaced at any time, ensuring accountability and flexibility." I'm concerned that that then creates a vacancy differently than the way the, the boards and commissions are set up now with an endpoint of their appointment. And, and it just is a little, so there are many people on boards and commissions right now who were recommended to apply for them by myself or by Mayor Rublekava when she was here. She taught me how to talk to people about boards and commissions. And there's many sitting on our boards and commissions. I think that if they felt that they could just be pushed aside anytime with changing political winds, or because of something they may say in a meeting, that that would reduce the amount of people that we can get to volunteer for the boards and commissions. So that one item, I'm concerned with.
So currently, it is the same process, except currently, it's the mayor who can replace at any time with bringing it back to council for approval. So that's, that's what can happen now.
Mayor, I'm sorry, the code actually says that the members serve at the council's pleasure and can be removed by majority of the council at any time, with or without cause.
Okay. So it, it can, it comes back to the council, though, like?
The full council, correct, yes. So I think that the notion of, I think the slide is actually correct, but it, it's not removed by any one council member, but sort of serve at the pleasure of the nominating council member, because if the full council removes, that council member then would be forced to make a nomination and bring that forward. If that nomination, say, failed, they still have vacant seats, they'd have to nominate someone else.
So this is just stating the fact that you can remove them at any time. It doesn't mean that they don't serve for a certain amount of time if they're not removed. Okay, now I'm clear, thank you.
Thank you for that question. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we're not removing term limits, or?
No.
Okay. And so just from my understanding, you're, this came up because we want to make sure we fill vacancies. And so one of the questions I had is, you're saying that those that are currently serving would have to reapply, and I know you made it easy, yes, I want to do it, and then we would decide whether they reapply. And I'm just wondering your thought process on that, just because I'm thinking, why not just allow them to serve their term out, and then they reapply? Or, I mean, then they could reapply.
Yeah, and I'm open to that. I, city attorney?
Mayor, I would just make the point that it, depending on who's terming out, when the council would just want to review, sort of, does that, sort of, different, council members would have different opportunities to sort of have their own nominees at different times? There's nothing wrong with that, but it's more of, that's what the effect of it would be, if it's sort of, the term concludes, and then the council member can nominate. I think the other question is, for those that come on through ARC, whose commissioner is District One, District Two, District Three? So that's the other question the council would need to resolve.
I was thinking about that, you know, I mean, there's seven of us, we all draw a number, and then what, it ends up whoever's first won. I would think that's the easiest way to do it.
Mayor and Councilmember Duran, if I may add just to that point, and apologies for interrupting, just to give you an example, if somebody was appointed today, their term is for four years. So we are looking at terms expiring in 2029 and 2028, for example, today. So just to give you that background as well.
So, in that case, so let's say, so, let's say somebody appointed someone for a four-year term, and then, and then they, they're off council in a year and a half, they would still fulfill their four-year term, I would imagine, and then somebody else would come in at the time they, they term out, right?
I mean, ideally, that would be the case, but in, even now, if someone is, terms out, and, or doesn't run, their representatives on the Planning Commission, for example, can be replaced by the new incoming council member.
Yes.
So it doesn't necessarily guarantee, even now, that the person would stay serving through their term. However, the likelihood of them finishing their term is high, because most of the time when you come in as a new council member, you don't necessarily come in thinking, oh, this is who I have for my planning commissioner. You think about what they have done, what they've served, and, and I, like, for me, when I was appointed, I appointed the, the other person who was runner-up, if you will, and she's been the representative on Planning Commission since then. And so, and I know that other council members have come in, and they've kept the current planning commissioner, so there's no turnover, only because a new council member comes in.
Yeah, thank you for that. Also, in regards to, what was the other question I was going to ask you? I'll come back.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Campos?
So, we have an example of a commission right now, or a committee, a commission, that has one person who was appointed by the alleged good ARC, and, but she was appointed to fill a seat for someone else who had, had to leave early. So her, she comes up now, her board time was shortened two years, and she's now expiring off the board, and I believe wants to apply again. So as people, as people's terms expire, rather than doing something like drawing straws or a name out of a hat, it may be a way to establish the council members' process by having whoever, whatever board member is terming out, whatever district they belong to, can appoint. If they then have another one that comes up, then you pass that to the next council member who hasn't appointed yet. I don't know how you want to figure out that seniority or process, but that way, it's more fair to the community and, and to us, I think.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment in regards to the term limits. So just so we're clear, so the Planning Commission terms, for example, those align with the council member terms. And so if we were looking at a district-based system, then a recommendation would most likely be to align the terms, right, with those council terms. Now, in our current setup, we do have unscheduled vacancies, and I can give you an example recently, where there was maybe four months left on somebody's term. We have to conduct a recruitment, we have to hold the meetings and appoint that person, and they may only be appointed for a month at the time of the conclusion of the appointment. And then they have to reapply for appointment in a month to do an additional term. So I will just note, from the city clerk's perspective, sometimes the term limits can be challenging, because there was an update to our boards, commissions, and committees in 2020. And at that time, for example, some boards, commissions, and committees prior to that were combined, and there was a phase-out approach of a term limit. It's a similar discussion that council's having now, about how to, how to phase out and how to phase in kind of new commissioners and a new appointment process. What that did at the time was set all the terms with that point moving forward, and so a lot of our terms expire on the same day, June 30th, or in December. And so with the unscheduled vacancies, it has thrown off the term limits. And term limits have been a challenge, or excuse me, the term itself has been a challenge for the clerk's office, because the example, as I noted, appointing somebody, for example, for a couple of months to fill an unscheduled vacancy, and then have them reapply and appoint again. So I would just offer that, that, that is, is most likely why, for example, the Planning Commission terms were aligned with the council member terms, and then set a term limit of three consecutive 12 years in alignment with council as well. So the current term limits apply to both council and to boards, commissions, and committees for those three terms, but I just offer that you might want to take a look at the terms as well. Because as I noted, if we have commissioners serving till 2028, that's two years from now, so i- if you did a phased-out approach, for example, it could take three years prior to getting to a full individual seven council member appointment process, for example.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilmember Schumacher?
I just have a couple of questions. Can we go to slide nine? So just for my clarity, or just for clarification, on the appointment part, we're saying that the ARC is now going to, or, I'm sorry, the council is now going to replace the ARC. Is that right? So we are the ones who is going to be appointing this group of people? Or, no?
So the ones, these are exempt, these here?
Right, but if we're getting rid of this committee, then it's going to be us?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And then the, in regards to the mobile home rent review board, can I just have some understanding on, I just want to know, I know you said it was, it was part of the municipal code, why wouldn't this be also part of, because I think what you said about the difficulty of filling this one, I think, when you were talking, I was like, oh my gosh, that's the mobile home rent review board? Like, yeah, I wanted to see if that's still a possibility. mobile home rent review board, like, yeah, I wanted to see if that's still a possibility for us to move that to?
And if you want to answer, because it has to do with the rent review ordinance?
Right, and Councilmember Schumacher, there's, there's some staff reports from around 2020 that looked at this in, in great detail, but the really short version is if any bit of the mobile home rent ordinance is opened up, then it could subject the remainder of the ordinance to challenge, even if sort of what the council's doing is fine, it still may open up the other aspects to challenge. So basically, the advice, and this is in public staff reports from about five years ago, was unless the council's prepared to really take on the full ordinance and to really, to really roll up its sleeves, it would be best to, absolutely, yes.
Okay, understood, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone, followed by Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, for clarification, so how would current appointees be designated a district or a council member? So if we chose to keep current appointees, but we're going to give them a district essentially, so Councilmember Campos referenced the fact that if we have multiple appointees who live in the same district, then how is that one of the two appointees going to be designated a, a different council member? Is that drawing out of a hat? Is that by, by the mayor or are you going to pick or?
No, and I think, if, Michael, you want to walk through the process, but I, my understanding or what I think could happen is we could, you know, among discussion, when, whenever there's more than one person to appoint from the same district, have any one of us consider, can we appoint that other person?
Someone volunteers?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Michael, is that?
Yeah, that's right, thank you, Mayor. So currently, as an example, on the planning commission, each one of the members appoints a person, but I believe that there is currently a planning commissioner that doesn't live in the district that they represent. And so it would be the same instance, for example, that I imagine the mayor would encourage residents in that district to be appointed, however, not limiting the pool of applicants still have the ability to appoint outside of that district, similar to planning commission now.
Correct, okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Duran, followed by Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I remembered my questions and one of them was the application process. Are we still going to be recruiting? Are we still going to be recruiting? So we have applications, for example, there's a couple of spots open, it's my district, I ask a couple of people, they say, man, I'm slammed Jim, I can't do it. Would I have a, 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 an application pull the pull from to say, oh, here's people that are interested and I, I'll, I'll choose them?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Duran. So yes, currently, the process itself is not intended to be changed by the mayor's policy consideration, meaning we would have an open recruitment throughout the year and the ability for folks to apply to any one of those council advisory groups. When a vacancy exists, those applications would be forwarded to the council member that has the vacancy and the council member could then review those applications and determine whether or not they, for example, wanted to meet with the applicants. But yes, we would continue to collect applications year-round and we would provide those applications to the full council.
Thank you. And one last question, well, at least one last question right this second, in regards to serving on multiple committees, I know if we have open spots, why not allow our residents, I don't know if they can serve on multiple committees right now, can they?
Thank you, Councilmember Duran. Currently, they cannot serve on more than one committee and I believe that change was part of the last council advisory group revision right before COVID.
How many committees do you serve on, Deputy Mayor Halter? Eleven, I serve on more than one. I don't know, I, I don't, is that something we did?
No, it was the previous.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, maybe we open that up because there's people that have talked about, they'd like to serve on more than one committee and maybe that would fill some spots, but that, that's her passion to do that and if they have the time to do that, why would we shut that off? Because you're on 11. Anyway, just a, a thought.
Something to consider, thank you. Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for bringing this item forward. The, the commissions and committees have been a frustration of mine for the last two years that I've been on council in terms of, I don't think we, as council, really work with them. At the last two strategic planning, you know, I've asked that we reengage our commissions, our committees, we just went through a huge strategic process, we, we haven't rolled that out to them, so I think some of the frustration in terms of our committees is I, I don't think we've been, I'm going to use the term shepherds to them, in terms of what we're trying to do as a council on it. I, I'm actually, you know, borrow a term from the city attorney, you know, would roll up our sleeves, I think we need to redo a wholesale, relook at our commissions and committees in terms of it. In, in terms of, you know, what's in the municipal code, I, I think, the, the clerk said that they're updating the protocols, I think we need to go for, even step back further and look at the ordinance and say, what are these committees charged with? Is this what we want them to do? And I think a big conversation that we had at the, the last regular council meeting regarding Ventura Water Pier is I think there's a frustration, I'm going to pick on Councilmember Schumacher a little bit, that the water commission is overseeing the project but not the finances, you know, and, and maybe we want, you know, and a little bit of our frustration is that the water commission can tell us about the project all day long, but they can't talk to us about the finances, you know, and maybe do we want to look at that, I'm going to use the word charter, you know, of that commission and do we want to relook at it? So, I mean, I, I appreciate you bringing this forward and I, I just think this is an opportunity to actually really do a wholesale look at, at the commissions in general and then I actually think, I did some homework last night, I went through all 10 cities in the county and there are some commissions that I think we should have that we don't have. I think we need to have a youth commission, that's in about half of the cities in Ventura County. I think we need to have a senior commission, that's also in about half of the cities in the county. So I, I almost challenged this body as opposed to the appointment process, you know, and that can be part of this, but let's really take a step back, you know, figure out what does being, what, the planning commission's a bad example because it's, it's, that's under state law, I believe, is a lot of their, okay, so we'll throw the planning commission out because they're, they're under state law, but the Parks and Rec Commission, you know, what do we want them doing, you know, and actually take a look, take a broader look, you know, at the municipal code, is this what we want them doing? What else do we want them doing? How do we align our goals, you know, with them? And then are there things that we're not doing, you know? One of our frustrations, I think, as, as a city, is we're getting older, so A, we need the senior commission, but B, we're not hearing our youth voices, so how do we engage our youth, you know? So I, I would like to take this as an opportunity for a wholesale relook at the commissions and committees in terms of that, that whole structure and then, you know, I would see, you know, the appointment, we can have that conversation, but that's almost how I'm looking at this as an opportunity, you know, and then how do we, and I know there's some Brown Act, you know, issues, but how do we say, hey, as a council, these are our five strategic priorities? These are the things that we want you, you know, working on and striving towards, you know, on it. And so that's just kind of where I am, I don't, I don't necessarily have an idea, but, you know, I, I just think we could take this opportunity for a broader look at this, this moment right now, you know, and I'm happy to roll up my sleeves and, you know, kind of start that process.
Thank you, appreciate those comments. If I don't, I don't see any other questions, so I'd like to recognize if we have any public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have seven public speakers for this item. Speakers will have three minutes, our first is Casey Rodriguez, followed by Carol Spector, Patty Overly, Karen Kitchell, Sienna Marie Sezma, Glenn Overly, Danielle Buckner, and then we have several online virtual folks as well.
To all Ventura volunteers of the past, thank you. As a current Art and Culture Commissioner, speaking for myself tonight, I guarantee you, I am out in the community more than anyone engaging with our city. Residents in all spaces know who I am and know I love the city. I envision all artists, culture storytellers, having a guaranteed fair application process. Only by guaranteeing this process will we continue to move Ventura into a more vibrant and inclusive future. Madam Mayor, last Thursday, you mentioned not wanting to be seen as a praying mantis. Perpetrate that exact image tonight. Rather you personally mean to or not, it's seen by many as tearing off the heads of commissioners that aren't politically linked as you. Instead, focusing on the current empty seats, thank you, Mr. McReynolds, for being a true leader and seeing the obligation that city council members should be taking into consideration tonight. Come, we have been inviting you, once again, speaking for myself, I know Arts and Culture Commission has been inviting you guys to come, meet with us, speak with us. We have been wanting to engage together to make the city better. Already freely given, also please consider taking into consideration not just focusing on the empty seats, but truly freely giving volunteers teamwork, give them appreciation, show us who volunteer, that we are a valid teammate with you guys. Too many times, we go unseen, unheard, unnoticed, unthanked, yet we continue coming to our commission board committee meetings, serving because we truly love our city and we want to make it a better city for all residents. Also, I heard something saying as a commissioner or a member only needs to say, yes, they want to stay. However, I heard the words, will take into consideration, council, please, make that a guarantee, yes, will be, yes, staying on our seats, not a guarant, not something to be considered, please. Also, I would like to ask that, we honor the words of Mr. Mc, Mr. McReynolds last Thursday, it's time to make good trouble. None of this sounds right. If Madam Mayor wrote this policy, I don't know why anyone else is answering questions regarding this policy. Thank you.
Carol Spector?
Um, where should we start? There are many pressing issues facing our city, but I think this internal policy consideration will affect how we address these topics. I love Mr. McReynolds' suggestions for adding new commissions, the youth commission, the senior commission, engaging with the commissions that we do have. I think that's a better use of your time than picking and choosing and interviewing people. I'd rather see you working with these commissions that we have. I don't know why we're doing this. I, I think what's needed is better outreach to the community, to attract volunteers. You certainly can engage people, ask people, get them involved to ensure that they're filled, but I don't see why you're interviewing them. Intentionally or not, I think this smacks of politicizing the process of gathering volunteers. You have power, your planning commissioners have power, I'm questioning your need to appoint more people to these commissions. It should be a neutral process. I think it opens up the council to charges of cronyism, warranted or not, certainly. There are three council members on the ARC committee, but that rotates and so you're having different people choosing people at different times. And I remember at the last meeting, it was Councilmember Duran that said, it was uncomfortable interviewing people in front of them and discussing it. That's not how it used to be, so go back to the old way of, of holding individual ones because that is embarrassing. I did hear, getting people from districts serves the city better, but then I also said you can choose from outside your district, so, so which is it? You know, what's, what's the point of that? I think the best qualified people should be on these commissions, not, doesn't matter where they live. It's really hard to staff committees right now and you're asking those people to reapply. That seems incredibly counterproductive to me. If you pass this and current members feel too insulted or degraded to apply, we're losing, as you mentioned, institutional knowledge and experience as well as just able-bodied volunteers. We want commissioners on all these commissions to be independent, we want them to work with you, but that's why we've engaged these people, to make independent decisions and represent the city. Let's see, I, I was surprised to hear about the DRC being phased out. I don't really know anything about that, I don't know where that's coming from, so I'd like to hear more about that. And the last thing, since I have 25 seconds, the Rules Committee is meeting more to talk about, sorry, no PowerPoints, no time seating, dah dah dah, that's coming before the Rules Committee on the 7th and then you're going to be asked to look at that as well. So people are not happy with losing their speaking time and, and ability to participate, so please keep that in mind when the next Rules Committee comes up. Thank you.
Patty Overly, followed by Karen Kitchell.
Thank you, Miguel. Hello. I appreciate, again, Mr. McReynolds for your comments tonight. You are taking a bigger picture, deeper dive, it's the right thing to do. This policy seems extremely rushed, it seems haphazard, it's not clear, I agree with everything my two prior citizens said. This policy has the appearance of yet another attempt to reduce public participation by turning the appointee process for these committees, commissions into district-based political appointments. This policy assumes that all of you know citizens to fill these roles. My question is, if you know it, and Mr. Duran, tonight you said, you heard, there's all these vacancies, why aren't you guys stepping up now? You mean you watch the staff struggle? And you, tomorrow, if this was implemented, would know seven people to appoint? I don't think so, something doesn't seem right there. It doesn't align. If implemented, this policy will create political appointments that could very well lead to conflicts of interest. For example, the Arts and Culture Commission votes on projects submitted by local businesses who financially donate to your campaigns. The commissions also vote on grants to organizations on which council members serve on their advisory boards. We had that with Mr. Halter and what happened this year with Rubicon. Will those commissioners' decisions on such projects and grants be based on pressure from their council members, which could be tied, tied back to the political donations from the project or grant applicant? I don't know the answer to this, but it must, it definitely needs to be addressed. I would also hate to see our commissions and committees have a majority of appointees from one special interest or political group. When there is a majority of council members aligned with such groups, there is a higher risk this will occur. Finally, requiring reapplication of current commissioners and committee members makes no sense, is a waste of time and completely inefficient. If somebody's not performing, you already have the power to remove them, you did it with Spencer Noren. This is a slap in the face of the hard-working volunteer citizens who have given hundreds of hours of their time. And if you want contact, I, that was one of the things that was said tonight, you guys will then, somehow this will make you have contact with the commissioners? Shame on you if you're not already doing that and you have to create a policy to do that. I mean, it just makes no sense. Thank you.
Karen Kitchell, followed by Sienna Marie Sezma.
Good evening. The discussion so far has blown my prepared comments out the window. As the vice chair of one of the commissions being considered for appointment changes, there are a few things I want to clarify before I go into the comments I was going to deliver. It's very important for the trust among the council and the public to know that the public interest is being represented by the most qualified volunteers. Expertise is not geographically distributed. I understand the district-based election of council members, that makes sense because you're addressing a wide variety of issues. We are We are invited and appointed to address very, really very narrow topic of expertise compared to what you all have to do. It's important that the best people are representing these issues. I've heard a lot tonight about workload of the city clerk's office, and I also want to interject the question, for whom would this policy change be directed? Who's going to benefit? It doesn't sound like a public benefit to me, because the avenues are open now for you to have conversations and nominations and appointments. There's no limit on that. So I do not, I cannot get my creative brain around the idea that expertise should be district-based, no matter what the commission is. So now I just have a minute. I saw that there are over 20 letters filed in the supplemental packet tonight, all vehemently opposed to this change. The public is seeing this as an encroachment on open and competitive application to be able to be considered for these posts. To present it as a political prize is kind of funny, and it was also funny to me to hear that there has been discomfort about being interviewed in front of people. Wait till you're a commissioner and your words from a meeting are tossed back at you. We undergo quite a lot of stress too, not what you all have to do, but this is a wheel that's not broken. And the fact that the mayor's proposals are going to be applied very unequally also raises some concerns. So I'm sorry you didn't get to hear my formal speech. Thanks.
Sienna Marie Sesma, followed by Glenn Overly and Nathaniel Buckner.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for all the listening and supportive decisions for our community that you have made. I'm Sienna Marie Sesma, the proud chair of a full and strong Arts and Culture Commission. I'm here to ask that you keep Ventura's commissions open to every resident by rejecting the proposal to sunset the ARC. ARC was created in 2013 after months of public workshops that drew more than 400 neighbors. It delivers a transparent, merit-based application and interview process that is working. Over the last two years, we, as Arts and Culture Commission, have wanted increase, and our community has wanted increase, of over 115% to the cultural grant program. We've reviewed over 25 new murals and installations and supported many local projects. One commissioner has served over 20 years as a committed volunteer to the wider arts and culture community. One of our newer commissioners was just selected by the California Arts Council for a statewide panel, and several of the commissioners have raised hundreds of thousands of dollars independently to support the arts and culture community. Proof that Ventura's talent pipeline is expert quality. We also represent diversity, equity, and various professional talent and skill sets. National practice points the same. Houston fills 166 boards, San Antonio 91, and through, all through open applications. Closer to home, Sunnyvale, Santa Monica, Malibu, Culver City, and dozens of other California cities still invite anyone to apply, interview, and be chosen on expertise and not by zip code. Replacing that with seven political nominations would narrow the perspectives and risk politicizing culture, just when the arts are helping us navigate inflation, recovery, and some social tension. If we truly want strong representation, let's widen the outreach. Post vacancies every district. Partner with our libraries, schools, and cultural nonprofits. Not shrink the application pool. To address some of the reasons why you are considering this problem, council members want to be more connected. Let's go to lunch. Let's talk. Come to one of our meetings. Regarding the fact that there were over 20 applicants for the Arts and Culture Commission, hmm, probably not such a big problem. These are difficult times, but our answer should be more democracy, not less. Please keep the arts ARC intact, boost recruitment, and let Ventura's community keep shining. Thank you.
Glenn Overly, followed by Nathaniel Buckner.
I don't know if you can see this, but I have this document that I've kind of scribbled all over, and I apologize, because my comments tonight are going to be kind of all over the board. First of all, I feel a little bit embarrassed for our leadership. You made these people here sit and wait over at Saticoy Village McHughes Development and the 2050 general plan draft environmental impact. This shows total disrespect for those people that serve as citizens. I mean, imagine tomorrow that Glenn Overly came up to you and said, and I'm going to use you, Alex, because you know I'm kidding, "Alex, I want you to go ahead and reapply for city council." Now, I personally know how hard you worked for it, but I also know how hard these citizens work to be on these committees, commissions, et cetera. The care policy was pretty well-prepared the first time it came through, but this council said, "Go back and do more work." And Councilman Campos and also Schumacher, you guys worked very hard and brought it back to something that could work. This policy, Rules Committee recommendation, by the way, only two people on that committee heard it, Councilmember Duran and our mayor. I think Mr. McReynolds, you were absent that day for whatever reason. So when you're putting a document like this together, be precise. It should have had not Rules Committee recommendation, it should be the two members that run that committee that recommended. And they use this term, ready without changes. Are you kidding me? This is an embarrassment. The problem with our committees right now is that you have issues that are not being solved. You have requirements that can't be met. I would ask this legal question of council. The county board of supervisors appointed five people to represent their mobile home rental. Is it possible that we can do an ad hoc committee to join with the county and the two entities join to go ahead and do this mobile home rent? Because it's a miserable one to actually fulfill. That might be something that would help out. But I want to say this, Mr. McReynolds, Councilman McReynolds, you and I are a lot alike. I get emotional on different things. It was good to see you emotional on that last meeting. I got emotional when, in Formula One, Max Verstappen was taken out at the first turn in his home race. Patty couldn't console me. It was bad. But you're absolutely right. We need a deeper dive and do exactly what you said. Thank you.
Nathaniel Buckner, followed by Donna Granata, Hales King, Sarah Ostrander, and our final speaker, Trevor Gottman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, team council members. I am not a very good public speaker, so I'll be reading it, and I don't have nearly the qualifications behind me that they do. I did apply to the Arts and Council Commission. I have 17 years as a professional artist and creative person in both design and fine art, but moving on. I'm here to speak strongly, in strong opposition to the proposed shift from competitive selection process to the appointment-based model for commissioners, particularly for the Arts and Culture Council. This change will weaken the integrity of the commission by placing artistic and cultural decision-making in the hands of individuals chosen for political alignment rather than professional expertise or community merit. We need commissioners to serve the city, not a single office or even a single council member. Once the positions are tied to individual councilmen members, the risk becomes clear. Public work will be shaped not by vision, but by politics, and that is not how great cities thrive. It is important to remember, when making decisions like this, that public art isn't always popular in the time. The Vietnam Veterans Memorial, for example, is now one of the most respected memorials in the world. I'm a veteran. I was just there. It's amazing. It's heartbreaking. It's everything that you can think of in a memorial. But because it was nearly, but it was nearly canceled because the designer was an Asian-American woman at a time when we had vilified Asians of all stripes. The controversy was ugly, and political pressure nearly derailed the process. But the work endured because it was chosen through a competitive, independent process, and today it stands as a national treasure. And I think it's revered worldwide as one of the most effective memorials of its kind. Do we want Ventura's culture, cultural future to be shaped by people who owe their positions to politics or by those who earned them through merit, experience, and a demonstrated commitment to this community? If this council proceeds with this shift, it will compromise the quality of the work our commissions can produce. Inevitably, it will limit voices and ultimately dilute the diversity of ideas and experiences that give Ventura its cultural identity. This may seem like a small, tiny procedural change, but the long-term effect on public trust, transparency, and quality will be enormous. Please keep politics out of our culture, keep our commissions open, competitive, and rooted in public service and not political service. Thank you.
Donna Granata, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Sorry, we need a motion to go past 10.
Make a motion. Go past 10.
Second. Thank you.
Go ahead and enter your vote now. Just hang tight one minute, Donna.
Okay.
All votes have now been entered. Six ayes, one no, and the motion carries. Go ahead, Donna.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Donna Granata. I am the executive director of Focus on the Masters and Arts Archive and Library. First, I want to thank you so much for your recent additions to the cultural funding program and the advancements you are making in the art creative community. We know from our own city's history and numerous economic studies throughout the years, such as the California Arts Council and Americans for the Arts, that every dollar invested in the arts has a multiply effect economically. I've been working in the cultural community in the city of Ventura for over 30 years. I have witnessed the ebb and flow of our prosperity closely tied to the city's support or lack thereof for our creative community. As a working artist, advocate, administrator, and former city council advisory committee member, I think it is critically important to have independent experts serving on these committees, especially the Arts and Culture Commission. With the arts being such a sensitive subject, we need individuals who understand not only the unique qualifications needed to advise an art city, but also people with varying backgrounds in the creative world who can help us truly thrive. I support an independent appointments recommendation committee where each applicant is judged on their competitive qualifications and professional expertise. An ARC will be transparent, allowing for public engagement and no independent political influence, especially in these times of uncertainty. One thing we do know is that the arts will always present opportunities to not only enhance our quality of life, but also stimulate our city's coffers. The economic stimulus to our community is one aspect of the Arts and Culture Commission that makes it unique from the others. One last request, please don't make existing commissioners reapply their appointments. They've already gone through the vetting process, and making them reapply disrespects their time and proven expertise. Thank you for your consideration of my comments.
Hales King, go ahead, followed by Sarah Ostrander.
Good evening, city council and mayor. I am here again on the Zoom to speak to you in opposition to some of the key parts of this policy and in your consideration. I second everything that has been said thus far tonight in terms of Section D asking our candidates who are, sorry, our current commissioners to reapply. While the goal might not be to target specific committees, not asking the other seven commissions or other five member commissions to go through the same process of needing to reapply does make it feel targeted towards a limited number of representation in our districts. As for setting the ARC, I would oppose in setting the ARC and actually advise the council to expand roles of members such as Schumacher, who currently does not serve on any of the council's sub-commissions, sorry, subcommittees. And as it stands, Campos is only a member of two, as is our mayor only one. So I do have some agreement in adding more representation across our council members in the ARC process, which may involve having all of the members of city council and the mayor involved in the appointment recommendations, and then putting that pool of potential applicants to a vote through the members of the committee, who then would make uninformed decision. And again, this would be creating more connections with the community and representation from people who are seeing and engaging with these artists and different more specialized persons in our community. Section C, I already mentioned before, it's only targeting certain councils, though I disagree with having, sorry, I'm a little nervous, speaking on the, without seeing the time on the thing. Only targeting certain committees, it does feed some distrust. I know anecdotally, as an employee of the Ventura Unified School District, some members of our music staff, teachers, were asked to reapply for their current jobs for the following school year, and because of this, some of our teachers were encouraged to apply for other jobs and have left for other work in a different district, leaving Ventura altogether. So again, with the longevity that we have on council, it really bothers me to see the ask for the reapplication midterm, and I would like to see the city have some opportunity to have recommendations, as well as, again, keeping the ARC council and expanding it to include more members of city council. Thank you.
Sarah Ostrander, followed by our final speaker, Trevor Gottman.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ostrander. I'm speaking as a private citizen and a resident of one of Ventura's mobile home parks. Not too long ago, as the city attorney mentioned, the residents of the mobile home parks wanted to amend the ordinance or change the ordinance to add our due process right to challenge rent increases, and we were told that we could not open the ordinance or it would be changed. So I was shocked to hear that now we're considering opening that ordinance. The last recruitment information that sent out to the city for recruitment for these boards did not include the rent review board for the mobile home parks. Also, Buena Ventura Park, where I live, the rent review people have serious questions about the staff's decision to, on the request for reconsideration, but there is no one that we can speak to other than staff who already approved the request. So we, again, are being denied our due process rights. Also, my question is, then, who would be in charge of changing the policies and procedures for reconsideration and for the, what things qualify as capital improvements and how those are figured? And the owners recently finished paying off legal fees for a lawsuit against the city of Ventura over this ordinance. We actually won the lawsuit, but we had to pay attorney fees because there were 11 years when there was no rent review board, and there were various, shall we say, shenanigans that occurred during that time. So I really, really, really think that you need to either... So I really, really, really think that you need to either appoint a board, actively recruit for a board, because there are a lot of people in mobile home parks who are unrepresented, who, and so even though, so I caution people when you're talking about a rent ordinance, rent stabilization for apartment owners, look at what's happened to the mobile home people. We own our homes, but we are being treated as tenants, and many of the things that have happened have not been fair.
Thank you.
Our final speakers, Trevor Gottsman. Trevor, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Staff, translation, community members. The way I see it is, first of all, I would say, judging from all our speakers who are highly qualified, and I would say, vote no on this, but I would say this is a wonderful opportunity to bring the community back together, because that is the overwhelming feeling amongst everybody is the more, I've always said, start at the bottom, have the city clerk's office, have Ventura Volunteer Community Corps, where everybody in the city can come and put their name down, what their expertise is, and within the city staff, they can sort of start filtering us out, and we, but the corps can be given work to do. They could, you know, set up the system, run the system, bring the community members out, and start finding the expertise, these lost pieces of gold lying around. So that's what I feel, this is the perfect opportunity to sort of really reconsider bringing in and expanding the members for each of these things. I don't know what laws govern, how many members can sit on each council and each, you know, the Arts and Culture Commission, if they're councils or commissions, I'm not sure, Parks and Rec, those type of things. Because I think if we expand them also, that will also give a more balanced opportunity. And I agree, geographics don't matter, it's the city. It's beyond the city almost. I mean, we're speaking ultimately global, but from my point of view, this is, we're in this perfect little capsule that can represent the globe, and it needs to be geographically, that should not depend on it. I'd say the council has very important roles to commit to adding, you know, their voice to this process, but it should be an opportunity now to set up a little Ventura Volunteer Community Corps run by the city clerk who does such a fantastic job, and just like CAPS, and maybe an extension even of CAPS. Anyway, that's my say, and thank you, everybody, and thanks for keeping up with this. But I would say vote no. Have a good night.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for any final deliberations. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one comment and one question. First of all, I just, you know, speaking to you at the Rules Committee meeting and you explaining what your intention and what your motive was with this policy, it was to fill spots. And so I want you to know that I know that, and maybe a lot of people are not understanding that that was your intention, was to get vacancies filled. And so, thank you for bringing this forward, thank you for allowing us to have this discussion on this, because I think it was a pretty important discussion we need to have. Now, my question is to the city attorney, refer the item, Rules Committee recommendation, refer the item to City Council with the recommendation that the item is ready without changes. What exactly does that mean?
Councilmember Duran, that was basically one of the three options that the protocols impose on the Rules Committee, so that's not sort of a form of art that the Rules Committee took. It was one of the three options that the Rules Committee could select, and basically, if there weren't any questions, then if it was ready to proceed to the council for consideration without changes, the verbiage the protocols have is ready without changes. So I can understand some would take issue, but the committee was following the protocols.
Right, so just for clarification, it wasn't that we were saying, hey, this is ready to go, we want you to vote on it. It was basically, there was, we had discussion and we're bringing some ideas to you.
Exactly, and even this item in front of the council, there's no action that's being requested, and staff would have to come back and have an understanding of what the council's directing anyways.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to go on one of the speakers, and I know Councilmember Schumacher asked about the mobile home rent review board. I understand the limitations. My question is, as there is not that board, there's no quorum, is the City Council the mobile home rent review board?
Or? Look at the city clerk, I think he may have an answer.
Yes, thank you for that question, Councilmember McReynolds. That's absolutely correct, and the code does state that. So in the absence of a mobile home rent review board, any of the jurisdiction that falls under the mobile home rent review board could be brought to the city council, that is correct.
So there is some semblance of that? If?
To the extent there were an agenda item that needed to reach the body, and basically for the last several years, my understanding is that staff's been able to administer the program, so there's not been an action item that would need to be presented to the body. So the fact that they don't have a board that would have quorum, that doesn't prevent the ordinance from being implemented.
That was just a clarifying question, and I didn't know the answer myself, so thank you for that. Kind of going back, we actually do have a commission that is about to sunset, the General Plan Advisory Committee, I guess it's a committee, sorry. Their last meeting is on July 15th. They've been around for five years, so I just, I think we should acknowledge their service and their, you know, on month 60 of their 24-month commitment, so, you know, so definitely, a lot of yeoman's work there on it. And then final, you know, I kind of want to revisit my, you know, original comment. I think you're bringing forward an item that we need to discuss, you know, I would like to, you know, I'd volunteer to start taking a look at it, and, you know, I don't know if it's ad hoc, if it's the Rules Committee or what, but, you know, I think there's an opportunity to really look at how we do that, the commissions and the committees. And then my final comment is, I think, as a body, as we're considering committees and commissions, I think we also need to consider community councils. If we are going to take a formal role, I think some of them are really strong, and some of them have a ways to go. And, you know, they could use some help, you know, from the city or staff, and that, you know, so, again, I just think this is an opportunity to really take a look at how we are doing all of that, you know. I was, again, as I mentioned, I was looking last night, city of Simi Valley, they use the term neighborhood councils, but they're, they get assistance from the cities, you know, for theirs. So, again, I just, that's kind of where I'm at, you know, I'd be happy to take this on, but, again, if Councilmember Schumacher isn't on enough committees, I buy all, you know.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and happy to make amendments to the recommendation as well. I'm not stuck on, you know, I hear the residents related to D, for example, in requiring a reapplication. I'm happy to change that to, you know, current board members, commissioners who wish to stay on just need to let us know. I don't know how we would word it, but I'm happy to take out the word requires reapplication. And happy to include and incorporate the ideas that were brought forward tonight. Again, this was the beginning of a conversation that I think can continue, it doesn't end tonight by all means, but I do think that we need to start looking at how do we become more, I think, representative of who sits up here so that we have working, you know, relationships beyond, you know, what we see now. So, Councilmember McReynolds, your light went on, did you still want to?
Uh, can I follow?
Okay, sure. So, yeah, I want to, again, clarify and ensure that while the concern of shrinking the pool of applicants, I mean, to me, the ARC is three of us, and those are the only ones who would see the applications versus, I think, if there's an open application pool, the potential for all of us to see the list, because we all have an appointment to make. So we're not limiting it to just those three council members. So that, to me, I don't know, I feel like that expands it rather than shrinks the availability. I'll go ahead and call on Councilmember McReynolds. Councilmember Mangone, and then go back to you. Sure.
All right. I feel like part of the root cause of the issues we're having here is the ARC interview process. It feels like that's a big issue here. So I don't know if there's potential to just improve that. It seems like the process we follow now is not as it's always been. I know, obviously, having three council members in the back while there's interviewees out here watching on the screen and listening is awkward, and it's hard to coordinate all of that. So I don't know if that can be done in lieu of kind of, of this broad swath of changes. I don't know, maybe I'm just thinking out loud, but.
If I may, just.
Sure, of course.
My understanding from the way we used to do it before, it was a violation of the Brown Act, because you had three council members kind of making the decision behind closed doors without any public interaction. And so that's how it became, you have to do it in front of, like, a public meeting. And it's been awkward, not just for us, but, I mean, the public, they're the ones who have told us that it's been just unfair, awkward, and so, but that is why it got changed to this public thing of doing the interviews in front of, you know, all of them. But it used to be behind closed doors, and then, and I don't know, Mike, if you want to add more to that, but that was what we were told, that we needed to do it in front of, as a public meeting.
Thank you for that, Mayor. So, yes, the Appointments Recommendation Committee was codified as a standing committee of the City Council, and what that meant is it was a Brown Act compliant body. And so the applications or the commissioner applications and council deliberation is not qualified for a closed session, for example, so the deliberation has to take place in an open session. That was the change to the ARC committee that the mayor is noting. It was a change for our applicants as well, because they, what they were used to was going into a closed room, interviewing alone, council deliberating, and then a decision being made after the fact to the commissioners. However, when that committee became a standing committee, which is codified in the municipal code, it then becomes a Brown Act compliant body. For the ARC committee as well, just Councilmember Mangone, since you were noting, the scheduling issues. I would just point out as well that some of the challenges we've had are with the canceling of meetings as well. So they get scheduled, and then they get canceled. To give you an idea, last year, three scheduled ARC meetings were canceled after applicants confirmed attendance for those meetings, for example. In the prior year, four ARC meetings were canceled after schedule, after applicants were informed of those interviews as well. So I just provide that as some of the background in terms of scheduling of that ARC committee as well that has been challenging. And I think this council may recall, we did bring a presentation to City Council in late December of last year with an overview of all of our different boards, commissions and committees, and council took an opportunity to take a look at the appointment process through the ARC committee and made several revisions to that committee, and so I just share that again as information sharing around that ARC setup.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds?
So I wanted to, on your presentation, if we could bring up slide nine, really quick. And I'm talking about the top two. So I have, I'm going to defer to the clerk, is it called the Matti Act? Is that the document? Okay, so I have the Matti Act document that we have online, available to us. So the Port District has two commissioners that their terms expired yesterday, and I believe the Housing Authority has two commissioners that their terms expired yesterday on it. So I think tonight, we have to decide how they're going to do. I mean, the port is a $16 million operation on its own, you know, they want to have their board codified. The Housing Authority is probably as big, if not bigger, you know, and I think we need to decide how we're going to appoint those board members tonight, if we're going to do something different with the whole thing. So I guess I, as the maker of the policy.
Mayor, if I could just touch on that real quick.
Sure.
Councilmember McReynolds, thank you, and apologies for the interruption.
Okay.
We did communicate with both of those outside agencies in terms of their current vacancies, and you are correct that the Housing Authority has two, and the Port District has two upcoming as well. In our current code, members are able to serve until they're replaced. So while their terms have expired, they are, they do have the ability to continue to serve until they're replaced. So while council was having this discussion, we reached out to both of those agencies and asked them if that worked for them, and so they are familiar with that process. As the mayor noted in the beginning of our presentation, the Port District, for example, the appointment process is in state law, and so we've been following an inconsistent process with state law by having it go to the ARC. So I think in terms of the Port District, for example, the state law, the Harbors and Navigation Code does dictate that the mayor makes an appointment with a council approval, given that that's enshrined in state law, they're looking at having their appointments filled by the August 19th council meeting. They're okay with the council recess. They will need an appointment on that August 19th City Council meeting, for example, and I imagine the Housing Authority would as well. However, the Housing Authority's commissioners are currently okay to continue to serve, as well as Port District, except for one of those members is leaving at the end of July. But just wanted to let you know, we have been in communication with both of them.
Yeah, my understanding is one of their commissioners is literally moving away, the Port District is, yeah, so they're looking for somebody there. So I just think we need to, if it's state law, we just, we need to make a commitment that we'll have that done on the 19th for those agencies.
Agreed.
And could I get a clarification on how does the Housing Authority work in terms of their, it says here by resolution?
Yeah, so the indication is that the Housing Authority was established by resolution, so the process is not enshrined in our municipal code. And so the resolution established the Housing Authority, and the appointment process has followed the ARC process. They are a seven-member body, they have five and then two residents, and so the city has just followed that ARC process for the appointments for them. But it's not necessarily enshrined in the same capacity as our standing committees or our commissions in our municipal code. It's kind of one of those one-offs, like the Port District was created by the charter, and it's enshrined in state law, so if you looked in the municipal code, it would be silent in terms of the Port District. And then the Housing Authority was established by city resolution, but also the appointment process is not enshrined in our municipal code.
So if we wanted to.
Follow a different process.
So that can be an appointment as well.
So if we want to mess with them, could we add more board members to their?
No. Thank you. Councilmember Mangone, followed by Deputy Mayor? Oh, no? Okay, Deputy Mayor?
General comments more than anything, that I appreciate this topic coming forward. I think it's, you know, it's not that a system was broken as much as, there's a lot of trouble with what we're doing with the ARC, and I saw that have been on it at least twice, I think I was on for two and a half times, actually, on that committee. But I think there's so many different things to consider, and I really appreciate all the speakers tonight, because I think there's a lot of really good points and things to make sure we look at, because it's really about how to most effectively run the city and get the input that we want from our community. A lot of that is done by us being elected up here, but then it's complemented by our, the committees and commissions that we appoint people to, and I think there's a lot of issues with fairness. people to. And I think there's a lot of issues with fairness and accessibility and choosing the most qualified people to help lend their voice, help us make the best decisions up here. There's other sides to it as well, though, and that's that we hadn't talked about. And that's, and I'm sure our city manager probably welcomed me bringing this up, is that each one of these committees takes quite a bit of staff time, depending on the committee. And so, we could, I think I could even think of many different committees or commissions that would be very useful, very helpful. That would be more than just a conversation with somebody on the street, whether it's youth, or whether it's college students, or whether it's about a certain given topic. But to codify it and put it into a process and create commissions or committees takes staff times, time which takes money, which takes more employees and staff. So, there's a lot of things you have to balance. So, it's really about getting as much input from the public as we possibly can in different perspectives so we could truly all make the best decisions together moving forward. And it's great that we brought this topic up and that we're discussing it, but I just don't see making any solid decision tonight. I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done to look at all the different variables that impact any changes that we make. Until then, the ARC committee, to me, stands, and we work on ways to get more candidates in. I know there's been aggressive, aggressive attempts with different city clerks to try to get, and I think it's running better than it ever has, but it doesn't make it perfect. And again, I want to reiterate that each one of these commissions or committees has staff that's basically responsible for that particular topic. So, making sure that staff has the time and the resources to help educate, form, inform each one of these commissions and committees. This is such an esoteric topic to talk about at 10 o'clock at night, that I'd rather be talking about widgets. But, but in the meantime, it's a necessary topic. And again, I appreciate the mayor bringing it forward and the Rules Committee, but I really think, I don't feel we're going to solve anything tonight. We just shared a lot of concerns, a lot of issues, and we need to figure out and get, kind of organize these thoughts and all the different variables that I know is going through my head and is probably going through all your heads as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to be clear, the reason why I voted no is because I'm trying to put my boundaries on our time. So, I do want to just, first of all, appreciate the mayor in bringing this forward. I think this was a really great way for us to assess where we're at. I really want to echo the sentiments that Councilmember McReynolds had pointed out in regards to, maybe it is time for us to assess what we're doing, how we're doing things, because it was about, what, nine years ago since we moved to district? And I think that, along with that, maybe should also come an assessment of how we're doing our, how we're doing our committees and also our commissions. So, I would be delighted to join you in reviewing that. And I think the mayor was actually very clear in regards to what we wanted to do today and really just look at all considerations and see what is possible, what is feasible. And I think we're not here, as the deputy mayor had mentioned, we're not here to really make any decisions, but to hear how we're moving forward. And I think the only thing that I would like to see what we can do at this point is do that full assessment. Because, by the way, we're calling the older adults, older adults, no longer seniors, FYI, just to be clear. But I do want to look into how that is possible as well in regards to, you know, the changing times and looking how we can engage more of our youth, more of our older adults. And I do also agree in regards to some of the comments that are being, that were said today, tonight. There is an effort for all of us to continue to seek and identify and try to recruit as many people as we can. I'm speaking for myself, but I know, I've talked to my fellow colleagues that we do that. We look for people that would be great for applying. And, I mean, you can go, you can go back to the college area community council, and I think city manager was there watching me beg, asking people to please, please apply. There's so many openings. And so, I think this would just kind of be another way for us to kind of see how we're identifying actual people that would be perfect for seeing how we can move forward in a shared vision. So, again, this is really great considerations. I don't think, I think we learned a lot today and just from the discussions and what we heard in the community. And then, that full assessment, I am, I am fully on board with.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds?
I was going to make a motion, so I want to let everybody...
Sure. Councilmember Campos?
I just wanted to ask if, so we're, whatever the motion is, whatever we're doing tonight, if ARC is still going to stay in place until we've been through this process of review so that we don't fall behind on other committees and commissions?
Yeah, well, I think the ordinance, or the recommendation for the ordinance was to look at what it would look like to sunset it. If that's not part of Councilmember McReynolds' motion, that's fine. So, I'm open to that.
Okay. And I think you did appoint in ARC, but it was held off while we were discussing this.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I'm going to try to make a motion here on it, and so, and be respectful of what you're doing. So, my first item would be that we extend all commissioners for one year. So, everybody that expired on June 30 of '25, their terms are automatically extended to June 30th of '26 on it. And then, that we would create an ad hoc committee with the mayor's appointment to review all committees from ordinance protocols, and then potential creation of new committees, and that that would have to be presented to the full council by April 30th of '26. So, if there's any budget considerations, as Deputy Mayor pointed out, that those could be incorporated into the budget. And then, so sometime in April of '26, that that full item would come back before from an ad hoc committee. Or if you're, the Rules Committee, I'm not...
I second. City Attorney, were you going to mention something?
Couple of questions, I guess, for the maker of the motion, Mayor.
Sure.
Whenever it's...
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Councilmember McReynolds, I guess, the first thing is, this agenda item is a policy consideration. So, in terms of extending commissioners a year, that would need to be a separate agenda item that would need to come back.
The August 19th, is that the next?
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, unless, I think next week may be a little ambitious. So, yeah, yes. I'm getting a guess from the manager.
And if I could just add to that as well, real quick, in terms of the term extension, we'd also want to look at the term limits. I know there are several people coming up on the term limit maximum as well. So, if you were to extend a year, you'd also look at, they'd be extending past those term limits.
I think the goal is just to give everybody, yeah. So, if, yeah, if that needed to occur, that would be my intent.
So, I think, so understood, and I think we could come back with something after the recess that I think addresses that question. Second question was sort of, Councilmember McReynolds was looking for April 30th. If you're looking to try to get something in before end of June, I might suggest 30 to 60 days earlier. And the reason I say that is there'd need to be first, second reading of the ordinance, and if there were some tweaks on first reading and assume we had to bring it back two weeks later, I don't want to, and it takes 30 days for the ordinance to go into effect. I don't want us to butt up too close. So, I'm, if you're trying to get it in by next fiscal year, I would suggest 30, 60 days earlier.
So, is the second March 31st?
That would be fine.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the mayor would appoint the ad hoc?
The ad hoc.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so, we have a motion and a second? Thank you.
And just a point of clarification, then. Was the initial recommendation then to direct staff to return with an item that extends the terms?
Yes.
And so, Councilmember McReynolds, for clarification on that, in terms of our current applicants that have applied for those current vacancies, would we keep those applications on file? Or we, given that the deadline is March 31 of 2026 to come back, we could do an ARC process, for example. ARC is currently on hold, but we do have applications currently on file.
I would be open to filling the, if the second is...
And sorry, I missed that clarification.
So, yes, we would, we would fill the current vacancies with applicants available.
Okay, so we would not be then extending the terms for the commissioners because we may be able to, depending on the number of applications that we have, we may be able to fill those with applications as opposed to extending the terms. So, you noted all the terms that expire on June 30th of 2025.
Yeah.
You wanted staff to come back with an item to extend their terms for an additional year. We have applications on file for all the terms that end June 30th, 2025. Would you want the ARC committee to interview the applicants currently on file today for those vacancies? Or would we be putting the files on hold and extending terms, which would then not be appointing new commissioners if we were extending the current commissioners?
I'm open to ideas if anybody has...
Could I, Mayor?
Councilmember Campos?
There may be some commissioners who do not want to extend, who are ready to move off. So, if we can extend for anyone who wants to stay on the year and then use the applications to fill those other appointments through an ARC meeting.
I tend to agree with Councilmember Campos in terms of if somebody wants to stay on for the, what potentially might be nine to 12 months. I think it's going to be hard to recruit to do that, but if there's a vacant, there's a true vacancy, there's an open position, I would like to get that filled if that, so, okay.
Understood. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
I was going to say, before this conversation, is that I would, the only thing that would stop me from supporting motion, I just don't see a reason to extend anything. I think we're just making a mess out of things, and I think that we, we have applicants and we have terms. We have people filling them, doing some, a lot of good work and hard work, and we continue down that road until we have a better plan. And that's what I would support. But as far as extending it, and I think it just throws such a big wrinkle and a mess into, into, the second best thing is what I just heard Councilmember Campos say. But I think just keep going down the same path that we're on, and we'll work on this on the side as an ad hoc committee and try to find something, a better way to move forward. Once it gets decided, we move on into that and transition into it.
Does anybody have any?
I would make a friendly suggestion for amendment to not have, not extend the term limit, not extend for one year. Just go down the path of the ARC committee, doing what we do, fill their positions as they come up until we have the ad hoc committee bring something back to us for us to have approve, approval, and we'll work out a way to transition into that new, that new process. That's how I would do it. And if that's, that's a friendly motion, friendly amendment to your motion?
I'm not opposed, and I'm not trying to make it difficult. My concern is, knowing that they might only be appointed for nine months, and I'm not saying, you know, or they're going to be appointed for four years. I, there is no answer by any stretch. I'm just wondering if that, people wouldn't be willing to serve.
I think that that's a minimal risk compared to the upheaval that's going to cause to extend and try to figure out how to move forward and have openings that we're not fulfilling and figuring out how to do that.
I don't want to pre...
It's choose the poison.
I don't want to preordain a decision in terms of, like, we're going to go with the mayor had suggested, or we're going to stay with the ARC. So, I think I'm willing to entertain your, if the second...
I was going to lean on what Deputy Mayor was saying as well.
So, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
And was that to remove the first one?
Yes.
Yes.
Status quo.
I did just want to share, in terms of this current recruitment, we're talking about eight commissioners that terms are expiring on June 30th. Just to give you an idea, we're talking about eight commissioners.
I just want to clarify, though, separate from the ARC, we're going to take care of the Port District and the Housing Authority?
Yes.
Or we, or does the Housing Authority have to go through the ARC process?
It's already kind of in the talks and process, right?
Yeah, I would defer to council. The, I think the Port District is enshrined, again, in the Harbors and Navigation Code and state law, so that appointment process is clear. I would defer to the council in terms of the Housing Authority, which we would, again, work to schedule an ARC meeting right away tomorrow, still with a goal of bringing those appointment recommendations to council. So, the Housing Authority could follow the ARC process, for example, or if council, as part of the motion, wanted to have it either match the Port District, for example, or another process, I imagine the council could do that as well.
In your conversations with the Housing Authority, if, so the goal would, I'm sorry, let me back up. So, the goal would be that by August 19th, ARC would make its full recommendation to the council?
That was my conversation with the Port District, not necessarily the Housing Authority, because the Housing Authority, I think their current commissioners were, you know, okay with continuing to serve. The Port District, as you noted, one person is moving, so they needed a final decision by August 19th, and that's why I've worked with them on council dates, and they were okay with having the appointment on the August 19th council meeting.
As long as, are you okay if we have, the recommendation comes back from ARC on the 19th for all the, all eight? You said there's eight vacancy, or eight?
And, well, there's more, there's more than eight vacancies, but the eight were for those seven member bodies that the mayor was discussing. We currently have 21 total vacancies that we're recruiting for.
Yeah.
Okay.
And with the, with that appointment, Housing Authority and putting out, like, do they have applicants ready to?
We do have applicants, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have applicants for both Housing Authority and Port District.
Okay.
Okay.
Because my concern was going to be the 30-day notice and all that.
We did have a recruitment period open for the last 60 days.
Okay.
So, we just closed recruitment. Recruitment was open, so we do have applications on file for both of those.
Thanks. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'll just read back that I have, the motion is to create a council ad hoc committee to review all committees, and the mayor will make appointment to that ad hoc committee and to return to city council by March 31st, 2026 with a final council presentation and recommendations.
Can I just ask a quick question? Mayor, when would you like to make that announcement of who's going to be on that ad hoc committee? Within 30 days and what?
I think our, even our next council meeting, so, yeah. That shouldn't take long. I just have to speak to the council members.
All right, then we do have a motion and a second. Go ahead and enter your vote now.
And once again, thank you for all the conversations. Appreciate it.
All votes have now been entered. Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you. So, with that, we'll move on to our second portion of public communications. Mr. City Clerk, do we have any additional public communications?
Thank you, Mayor. No additional public comment at this time.
Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, July 8th. We'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you. Good night, everyone.